I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, first up is the minutes for June 4th. I was not here, so I'm gonna let you guys handle those minutes.
I move to approve them.
Alright, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
You guys want arm wrestle?
Oh, I don't, I didn't hear. He's too quiet at times.
Okay, we'll give it the second to Cannon.
Yep.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the June 4th minutes as drafted?
Aye.
Aye. The June 14th minutes are also in here. I will make a motion to approve the July 14th minutes.
The only thing that I had was, uh, my name was spelled wrong throughout.
Okay, we will fix that.
What's the correction?
Uh, there's the N before the T. There's no N there.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, Ellen, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving with that, with those corrections?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we are on to public comments.
Greg Woodmore, North Road. Want to talk about my disdain for Common Core math to start off the school year. Education tends to run in trends. I've been in education for 20 years and I've written out a lot of trends. This is a trend that I hope goes away sooner than later. There was one particular problem that drove me over the edge. It was this one that my daughter brought home and it says, decompose the total to subtract from one, then complete the equation. And I sat there and I stared at this thing for a good 20 minutes, half hour. Then I had to look up what this possibly could have meant. And even then, I still wasn't sure what this meant. So, I mean, I'm in education. I, I should probably get this pretty quickly, but you know, this is something given to young kids. And I look at the scores, uh, you know, our state standard, our state testing scores for math. And I gotta tell you, I feel like this is a big part of the problem. When a kid brings this home and the parent says, I don't even know what this is beginning to ask me. And you know, they have to sit down and basically take the course themselves. Who are we helping here? Math worked fine for a couple hundred years. I don't wanna sound like an old fogey, but Common Core math is just not translating to higher performance. And I really, I can't think of the last several years if I've heard serious conversations, at least publicly, concerning curriculum on the school board. I'm sure, I know what happens in the, in the school itself with the teachers, but I wanna hear the school board drag people in here and say, hey, is this working? And if it is working, then why don't we see it translating into the school, you know, when we have our state assessments? What else? I see that the portables are on, or I'm sorry, the modulators are on the, uh, on the curriculum, or on the schedule tonight. I really hope you're discussing how we're gonna get kids out of there once and for all, because really the end game for that is to figure out a way to shuffle people around and not have any students out there ever again. I don't know if it's ever been discussed, does DCS have a policy for AI use? Do?
It's on the agenda.
Is it?
Yes.
Good, because I can tell you, I've had people telling me to embrace it in the last couple of years. I can't think of anything coming down the pipe that is more destructive to the overall educational experience than AI. It's absurd what I'm seeing already. It's shocking. I'm getting to the point where having any electronic in my classroom is a detriment to my sanity and their overall educational experience. So I hope that this is something that will be taken extremely seriously over the next year and really put under a microscope. Because, you know, these kids are even gonna be coming to me soon enough. And are they going to be able to conduct research? Are they going to be able to write anything independently on their own? I mean, it's, it's, I can't believe how bad it's gotten and how quickly it's, it's gone downhill. And one other thing I wanted to mention, in the past, I've seen a couple instances where we invited Concord kids to come and just talk about their experiences. Can we put out a, now that we've had some kids successfully go through Brown, you know, a year or so, can we invite some of them in to say what their experiences with them? Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Okay, board discussion regarding public comments. So I will say there is a policy that is on first reading tonight regarding AI use. The typical way that policies are dealt with is that there's a first reading at our meeting, then our policy committee, which is Nancy and Ellen, get together, they make changes, recommendations. If the board members have changed recommendations, they let them know. And then it comes for a second and third reading. But I don't disagree. I have not, I used AI for the first time the other day. So I agree, I think it's.
And the draft policy is probably in the packet, right? For tonight?
I believe it is.
I believe it is.
So it's there for.
Right, if people have concerns, comments, please let us know how we can make the policy better.
And I believe there's something in the student handbook, just a little thing about it, cuz executive board talked about it like a year ago. Yeah, just about cuz we wanted it in before last school year began. It's not a lot cuz it was just starting, but I believe there is something in the handbook.
There's another policy that we're going over tonight about electronic devices as well.
So there's a new law that cell phones are banned in schools, bell to bell. So. But there are other electronic devices like laptops and things that are available.
I also wanted to, I just wanted to just mention to the last speaker too, that we did have a presentation on the math in DCS, I don't remember what.
I don't remember what date it was either.
Remember what day that was? Just the.
When the math committee came in.
When the math committee came, so we did have a presentation on that.
It was sometime in the winter.
We did, but I think, I, you know, what we've seen with science and math is that they are saying that this, they have reasons that the standardized testing excuses for why that, you know, that the tests aren't fair to the kids.
That was definitely for science. I'm not sure whether that was true for math, but maybe. I don't remember, I remember definitely for science because.
Well, I think that, yeah, and then just in general, they were saying about the, the effort that the kids want to put in. It's, you know, cuz they're not actually graded on their report cards on and everything. And so, I think there's.
I would like to, you know, in the past, it's been brought up too about looking at other schools that have good test scores and what do they do? And I, I would love to, at some point, if we could maybe put a subcommittee together or something like that, to look at test scores of schools that are similar to us and maybe go visit them, talk to them, find out if they're doing things different than we're doing. I mean, I think that would be.
Yeah, I mean, there's always room for improving them, but I also was trying to find them the other day. Cuz I was curious, yeah, I test scores. And I, and maybe I'm on the wrong year or in the, cuz going around that website isn't the easiest for the state. Yeah, but I thought, and I mean, there's always, you wanna be higher, but I thought we were at least.
About average for the state.
At state average or above.
I think we were.
Now, I'm not saying we can't be higher than that, but I don't think we're in the cellar at this point.
Is that correct, Kristen?
Yeah, I believe what I found for both math and literacy, that we were actually a tad bit above the state average. Which, again, I would prefer to be, you know, everybody would be, but.
Remember when you're looking at the data, there's a two-year lag. So you're not gonna see the most current year.
Right.
You're gonna see two years.
Well, that's a good point.
Yeah, and the other thing, just with Common Core, I thought the state voted in Common Core for schools to do. So I don't know if we have authority to say we don't want to do it anymore. And, and I don't know, I guess as a teacher too, when it was, to me, I looked at Common Core as this is what I need to cover. But we covered it the way, you know, they didn't tell me how I had to cover it, if that, but these were the standards I had to cover. But I believe that state.
Maybe it's a bigger issue with the math program? I don't know.
No, no, yeah.
That we're using?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure, but I just wondered, I mean, it would be nice, I mean, if we don't like what's happening in Common Core, but I don't know how much authority we have to change it if the state voted it in.
Yeah, you know, the math programs are something that we review.
We can, yeah, I agree.
Come in, we ask them if they like the curriculum, if they like the program. Their curriculum is reviewed on a six-year basis? Three? Four-year? I don't know. I'm not on CRB, but.
I think it's four years.
It's on a seven-year cycle.
But they're constantly going through it and looking at it and working on.
No, I was just, I mean, I think that the teachers are naturally gonna like these programs or subscriptions because at the end of the day, it's making their jobs a lot easier. They're not creating these lesson plans like they would have to without that.
I don't necessarily agree with you. I think in every situation, like even when we were in school, there was a textbook and there was a workbook and there was, there was always stuff that teachers were using. This is like an electronic version, so there's a lot more stuff. But I think that's always sort of been, you know, you sort of pick what textbook you're gonna use, you're gonna pick what materials you're gonna use. That sort of power.
Do these programs not give them lesson plans?
They'll give, they'll give them templates or ideas, but a teacher can choose to use a scripted plan or they can choose to tailor that or use it as a reference and create their own like student-centered approach based on their classroom. And I would say that probably a majority of teachers use that as a guide, unless they're going through like a very scripted program for a purpose. Like if they have a group of kids that's really struggling with, you know, consonant vowels and they wanna go through a scripted plan, then they'll use a scripted plan. But teachers develop their own curriculum based off of a guide for.
And a lot of, a lot of that's because they wanna differentiate, cuz the kids aren't always at the same place. They don't have, the understanding isn't the same. I mean, I didn't even use a textbook. I pulled it out every once in a while cuz it was important for them to learn how to read textbooks. But I didn't even use them.
And I think my understanding is that there are meetings with like the second grade, the third grade, and they all talk about their curriculum and how they're presenting information and they all work together to sort of figure out how the best way to do it is. So I think that's a very simplified way of looking at education, is that we just are reading from a script. I don't think our teachers do that.
I found the scripted things very difficult to, I mean, just the wording of it sometimes. It was like, no, I'm gonna put this more in kid-friendly language that my students are gonna understand more. Or we had one program once and it even said, and the children will nod their heads now. And I'm like, my kids aren't nodding their heads right now. You know, I mean, so some, I would often, if you saw my copies of it, I had tons of notes written in the sides about, yep, this part worked, nope, I gotta reword this to get them to understand it more, so, yeah.
I don't think that, like, the example that Greg presented, I think that, that that's homework that's getting sent home and that's not.
Yeah, no, I get, I get what he's saying with looking, but the whole Common Core thing, whether, my point was whether we like Common Core or not, I'm not sure how much we can change it. I mean, I would find out, you know, or, you know, and that would be something to ask, but it was something that the state adopted and said schools were to do it.
Right, so Jess, can you find that out for us?
I made a note to bring back more information for you guys.
Yeah, no, I'd be interested too, but that was like, yeah. I agree, so.
Okay, so we will move on to agenda review.
Oh, didn't we have on the agenda too to have kids from the schools come and talk to us?
Yes, I don't.
I don't remember where that stands.
At the end of the school year, we talked about trying to do that.
Yeah, we were gonna try and do that.
I know Patty was gonna reach out to Headmaster Smith.
Yeah, cuz we were doing both schools, we wanted to do both schools.
Um, and I don't know.
We even had Concord kids this year. We didn't have anybody come this year.
We haven't had any kids come in.
I made a note.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
But that was, I agree, that was something we did talk about having.
Yeah, that we'd like to have them come from both schools. And Pemba too.
I made a note Temple 3.
Right.
Okay. Moving on to agenda review, so we do have a few more additions for informational items. And that is it, I believe. Okay. Review of correspondence. So I will publicly say that the correspondence not being in the full packet was my error. I thought that Leah, when she sent the email, had copied a superintendent, she did not. So typically, if someone copies a superintendent, they will put it in the drive automatically. So I noticed it today. So we will, if we could make a note, add her email to the minutes.
Oh Leah, yeah, I didn't see that.
Yeah. She did email the full board, but it didn't make it into the packet. Made into the drive, but not into the packet. Cuz the packet was published.
It's fine, I didn't see it when I read them.
At the end of the week. And I gotta put it in there today, when I noticed.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't in correspondence.
So are we not allowed to read that aloud, or?
It's not been our policy that we read email, full emails. And I don't think it's a good practice to spend the meeting reading aloud full emails. I think that could become abused very quickly. We will attach it to the minutes, and so it'll be part of the minutes. But we can certainly discuss the email that was sent.
Yeah, I think you've done that before, where you just said, received an email and it was about blah, blah, blah.
So.
But it typically doesn't even get discussed.
So we can discuss it. Yes, so we can discuss it if you would like. So Leah McHugh sent an email regarding the book issue from last year that was found in a teacher's classroom. The book has since been removed. There was a request that teachers create a database of all the books in their classroom libraries, then make that available. So we can certainly discuss that if, if there's interest.
Yeah, I think that that's a great idea and that I think obviously it's gonna require some effort from the teachers initially. But once it's done and they have a spreadsheet, I don't know how many books these libraries typically contain.
It's on the teacher.
Right.
I had hundreds, yes.
So I think, you know, based on the volume, I think it's kind of a big ask. I don't think we can make them come in this summer.
No, I, I think, I think it's something that we can maybe request, but it might take them a year to do. I mean, this is a lot of work to sit there and put a spreadsheet together. I, I mean, I think I had a spreadsheet of my books, but I just did that for myself.
Some might.
And some might already have that. But you've got so much work to do at the beginning of the year. I can't imagine, you know, bogging teachers down with this. But I think it's a great idea that maybe by the end of the year.
We prevent that from happening again.
Yeah.
Cuz it was an oversight, so.
Right.
So, these lists though, so I make a list of all the books in my classroom, then what?
I think if you do a spreadsheet and then just put it on your classroom website.
Right.
And so if parents wanna look at it on my.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I will, I will say this teacher did have a database too.
Right, yeah, a lot of teachers do, so. And it's, it sounds easy to update, but it's not necessarily, it's not so much if you put in new books, it's you lose books.
Right, like what frequency are we requesting?
Yeah, you just have to kind of maybe update it once a year. I, I mean, you can't expect the teacher to keep that updated all year long because books go in and out and don't always come back. But new books going in, it would be easy to put them in, once you have a spreadsheet.
Right.
Do you think this would be a huge ask for people?
It would be a big ask, I don't know the best way to go. Definitely cannot happen at the beginning of the year, like. Start the school year. Teachers have gone through their libraries to make sure that the books that they have in their classroom are appropriate, grade level appropriate, age appropriate. Some teachers do have a database already. I'd like to get a sense of who does have a database already. What that might look like moving forward if we're going to be creating. And what's, to what end? What's the end, where's, what, where's this coming from? I don't, could you give me a little more information about that?
Oh, sure. So the email was about, obviously, the book from last fall and having it available for parents to review the, the books.
So if they look through the book list and say there's books that they don't want their children to read, they can get back to the teacher and let them know, and the teacher would know as far as signing them out or whatever. Cuz, I mean, there are.
Or also help identify books that are shouldn't even be in the school at all.
It's possible, but supposedly all these books have been already approved.
I do think it will be incredibly hard for the teacher to monitor, you know, book preferences. So if it's like, I don't want my kid learning about wizards. I think that's a lot to put on a teacher to be like, okay, this person can't learn about wizards. This person can't learn about mermaids. This person can't learn about X, Y, or Z. So I think, I think it's fine as a general premise, but I think expecting teachers to remember just preferences is not realistic.
No, I'm not, I didn't mean preferences.
No, I know.
I was thinking hard no's is what I was thinking, but.
Well, I would say if there's a hard no, like let's say someone thinks a book is completely inappropriate for a second grade classroom, there's a policy for that, there's a procedure for that. So they can go through the formal policy. I don't.
There's an objectionable material.
Right, so I think that is, that's the solution, is that they wanna object to the book existing in the classroom. That's the policy. I don't think. Yeah, I don't think we can cater to preferences. If they wanna tell their own child not to take out books from the teacher's library, they can certainly do that.
And who determines whether the book is, I mean, there's a book banned on Charlotte's Web, you know, Charlotte's Web is a book that.
Right, that's why I think it should go through the formal process if they wanna contest the book.
I know, right?
I know, it's, I don't, yeah.
So yeah, if you could ask, I think if it's going to be an extreme amount of work for teachers, I think this wouldn't, does not wanna be popular, but, you know, giving them a stipend for doing something that is not technically part of their job description.
Also, I think if you give them a year to do it.
Sure.
Like you can put in 10 books this week and 10 books next week. I mean, that's not that much work to just add to it.
And I know that I've heard suggestions that the paras do it. I don't think that's an appropriate request of the paras. That's not in their job description to be the librarians for the classrooms. So if you could get a sense, if people already exist, I know like some of the younger grades have hundreds of like paperback books. So if that's gonna be an extreme amount of work, my philosophy is not adding work to people without compensating them.
I wonder, oh, and this, but like even like, so I'm thinking of when I had my classroom library, I might have a particular series, like Junie B. Jones, which has 30 books. All the same author, all the, could you just put Junie B. Jones series? Not have to list every single title?
You that, that the book that started, started all this was part of a series. It was a graphic novel series.
Correct, but if you, see, I guess I'm thinking of the little.
Sure, sure, yeah.
My mind's still down with little kids and stuff, but just trying to find a way that, but if the parent had seen that it was a series, they might have, you know, checked it out or something. I mean, it will be interesting to see how parents use the list too, but.
Jess, you know what's going on in other schools in the district, just to curiosity of, or other schools in the state? I mean, this is not a deer field, this is, you know, coming up in the state, so.
I think there's, I don't think it's unreasonable to request a classroom library database, but I think giving, I think a year's worth of time, because you're right, like.
They need, they need a lot of time to do it.
It's a lot, that's a lot of, when you're trying to prep a classroom, you're trying to put curriculum and things like that.
That would take hours to do.
Yeah, some people it would take days if they've got hundreds of books. And that's not unreasonable that a teacher would have hundreds of books in their classroom. And I think most of the schools are aligning it with their policies that currently exist, like the objectional materials policy, like their library book policy, those kinds of things. So that's pretty much where people are at, but it's not, I haven't seen anything that, like, everyone's doing the same kind of thing. It really is school-specific, so where you guys don't have anything formal in place, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable to give the teachers a year to put that together and just make it, develop those habits and processes so that they can figure out how to manage the materials in their classrooms. And it's good to know what we have. Cuz we're supposed to keep track of all the materials we have there.
Yeah.
Well, the library is online. There's an entire catalog online.
Right.
Every book in this, in this library. It's not, it's already done.
Right.
Just, just.
So do you think it's a reasonable request if, to give them a year? To do that?
I, if this is something that we need to move towards, I think a year is a reasonable amount of time. And to, to expect it to be done, you know, if we took an October PD day, that means that all that professional development that we are gonna do that day is going towards now.
No, no, I just think that we need to make an effort to, I think it's something that a lot of people care about, I don't think it's.
I don't think it's a bad practice for any reason.
No, and, and it's also having a classroom list makes it easier for the literacy person to look through the books and, you know, make sure they know what's in all the classrooms too.
Have you heard from more than one person about this? I'm just asking about, is there, is, was this one person's request or is this something that you've been hearing a lot of requests for?
I've, I've, I've heard several requests about it.
We do have several other schools that have it. We do have several other schools that do have classroom library databases.
I think that this was a, a good suggestion. I've heard a lot about the, that it was, the, the situation wasn't dealt with well. And this is kind of like a, not a solution, but something that is making an effort that this doesn't happen again.
Yeah, and I mean, regarding that it wasn't done with well, I think people need to realize that they're not ever going to be privy to every single piece of information. So they're not going to know about teacher discipline. They're not going to know any information about the student, about the, or the investigation. So I get that people think that it was not handled appropriately, but unfortunately, there's a lot of information that is not public. So the board heard about it in a non-public session. There was a policy change that we specifically headed into policy because of it. And so it was handled. So I understand people have their feelings about it, but they're also not privy to all of that information. And that's how it is going to be.
Yeah, it was handled six or seven months later, is that what you're talking about?
No, it was handled immediately.
Okay, that was prior to my.
Right, it was last fall. So it was dealt with the same week.
And then a poli, and then a policy was written.
We added it to the agenda the next meeting.
Right, yeah. But I do like the idea of each classroom having their own inventory of the books that are there.
I just think we, we as a board need to be cognizant of, of the time that we're requesting of teachers. You know, like in their CBAs, they have a certain amount of uninterrupted planning time and their workday begins 15 minutes before school and 15 minutes after school. So if we're asking them to stay after school, if we're asking them to do, use their personal time to do this, we, if it's going to be a big ask, I think we need to consider a stipend or some sort of compensation for work that's outside of planning and teaching.
I don't know, I don't think it needs a stipend. I think this is part of their classroom management and I, I really don't think that it's that big of an ask. But I think you need to, you would maybe need to constantly remind them, don't forget to be updating your list, you know, so that they don't get to the end of the year and they haven't done anything. You know, if we give them, like, I don't know if we do give them a due date, but if we do, that would be something. Cuz if you sit down for 15 minutes and you put in books, you're gonna, you're gonna put in about 15 books in 15 minutes, I guess.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
I mean, if you could get a sense.
It wouldn't take you that long.
From the teachers, I think that'd be very helpful. That's fine, I think that's fine. Okay, the other thing that I put in correspondence, you may not have seen it. And I struggled with putting this in informational review of correspondence, but, so I, as we discussed, I don't know, months ago, I reached out to an appraiser about the State Road property. And he advised that a report for that type of property would cost $1,200. So we can decide to move forward, we could decide to contact other appraisers. I indicated that I would like to. Um, I indicated that I would like to get the appraisal report by October. So that we can start having, we can present it and we can decide if we're going to put it on a warrant article. Um, or if we want to hear from the Conservation Commission or whomever about the property before we decide whether to put it on the warrants. Um, but what would the board like to do? We could move to approve the twelve hundred today, or we could reach out to others.
Yeah, I would, I would like to take a moment to reach out to others before we spend that kind of money, there's lots of people in real estate in this community. And um.
Yeah, there may be somebody that's willing to do it if we give them the, you know, if we say that, you know, if we decide to sell, we'll give you the listing. Something like that, you know, like.
I don't know if all real estate agents are also appraisers, but potentially we could find one.
No, they're not, but I'm sure that most realtors have somebody that they.
Sure.
That they work with, whether it's in their office or not.
Does anyone want to reach out to anyone else?
I'd be happy to reach out to two people I know of.
Okay, great, that'd be great. Okay. That is that.
And then we can bring it up again maybe in two weeks and then, you know, if we want to.
I would like to bring it, have the report by October, just so we can.
Send the warrant article.
So we can decide whether we want to put it on the warrant articles, so we can sufficiently hear from the community about whether this is even something.
Right.
That should be considered.
Still need some feedback from the, I mean, I talked to the Energy Commission Committee and the Conservation Commission, haven't really gotten anything back from them.
All right, consent agenda, there was um. One item for the consent agenda that was in the drive, um, it is a student request. We can't publicly discuss the request, but um, we can take action if everyone reviewed the request. Otherwise, we'll have to review it and not public it.
I do not know that I got, I did not review that.
Yes, and then the one on the other side. Yes, it says the same. Or it's the same one.
We can review it in non-public, um, and then we'll vote on it when we come out. Okay, immediate business, uh treasurer appointment, um. I don't think we need to go through the whole treasurer saga again, but um, someone has stepped forward, Lynn Devarny, who used to work for the SAU. She lives in town and she has stepped up and has volunteered to be the treasurer. Um, so I would nominate uh Lynn Devarny to be the treasurer.
Do you need a second?
I think so.
I think we should just go around the table.
Um, any discussion? Happy to have somebody, happy to have someone, it's a very important role. Um, she's already very familiar with the accounting at the SAU, um, and Eric has. Um, stated that he would help onboard them. I will say we also need to appoint Eric to be the moderator.
Oh.
Um, so we'll do that next. Um, Eric has been very um involved and he, I'm sure he will gladly help her if she has questions with the treasurer role.
Great.
Okay, all in favor of the treasurer appointment?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, well, I guess I don't know if he needs to resign first. No, he's been covering on a temporary basis, so Eric is covering treasurer on a temporary basis. He resigned from the moderator position so that he could do that, so it's not a conflict. So I'll make a motion to appoint Eric Gross as the school district moderator. He did win the election in March. Do I have a second?
Second?
Okay. Um, again, he won the election in March, he had to step down so that he could fill the treasurer role um in the interim, so this is really just. Formality, instituting the will of the people, um, all right. All in favor of Eric Gross being appointed as moderator?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will meet with, I'll contact both of them to do the oath of office.
That's nice, somebody stepped up.
Yes, very grateful. Um, okay, now we are moving on to modulators. So this was a request from Canon, I know that there was a lot of modular discussion in the last few meetings, but. There was still a question of who's in the modular, I think.
And Kristen's prepared to tell us what their decision was with the modulators. Uh, yep, so we have our three third grade classrooms out there and um, as you know, we have. Three second grades, um, and our, so two second grades. We were able to bring the third, second grade into the into the building last year because we had three kindergartens. But we have four kindergartens going into the school year, so our, that third, second grade is out in um, one of the modulators. Uh, we have placed a classroom aide out there, which is different than a special education para educator, special education para educators are either one-on-one or shared. Um, for specific student needs and the classroom aides are typically, you have four regular classroom classroom aides. Um, which are typically in our kindergarten or and or first grade classrooms, depending on our year, we use them different ways. Um, our first grade have, they have a para educator in every single one of their classrooms, if not two. Um, because of the needs of the rising uh first graders, so we didn't need a classroom aide in. The first grade classroom, so we moved that person to second grade and we put that person, that person will be stationed out in the. Uh, modular to uh support the teacher and the students, um. The classroom aide will be shared between all three second grades, so there might be times when she's not out there and she might need to support. Um, one of the other classroom teachers. Location of where she will uh do her work.
Great. Um, is there a discussion?
I will say, sorry to interrupt you.
No.
Sorry if I, someone's about to speak, um, I will say we did consider many other options of of. Who to put out there, including our world culture cultures teacher, um, I think Mr. Greve has worked in the building before when. Middle schoolers were going in and out of there for world language and it's. Having having um a class that is in and out, in and out, in and out, in and out all day long. Um, is disruptive to the other um classroom that's in there, which is the other third grade classroom it would have been. Um, and it would only solve the problem for one year, this is a particularly small second grade class that is rising. And um, it would have made sense in that, do the world cultures classroom, does everybody know where that is? Room one, two, six, it's the um, one, the classroom right before you go out the doors of the modulars, it's right there on the right hand side. It is not a standard sized classroom, um, but it does work for a world cultures teacher because the the kids are. Smaller groups are in there at a time, so we did consider putting second grade in there because it's a small class. A typical, but next year's class rising up is probably eighteen or nineteen kids, so that's too many kids for that space. So we've only solved that problem for one year, so we just figured we would. Um, make the decision that seemed to have, make the most sense instead of constantly changing and. Like Mr. Greve has mentioned, um, to me several times, having middle schoolers in and out of that building. Off the ramp, down the ramp, Simon, the door, open the door, shut the door, open the door, downstairs, upstairs, blah, 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 you know, the school's travel, they travel in packs and um. So that is, that, I just wanted to make sure I have.
Yeah, great.
Thank you. That's part of the story.
So, uh, there's during, on my tour, there was a classroom that was divided in two for specialists, I believe, on directly the.
By the cafeteria.
Oh, yes.
Is that, is that classroom not big enough?
Um, I think um Nancy has spoken to that classroom many times and that's one of the things that we um had looked. Considered, there's lots of things that we consider in this building, um, I know it was hard, it's hard to have a second grade. Um, on the complete opposite side of the building, you know, from where second grade class is over here. Um, that classroom is, one of the reasons we put specialists in there is because it's near the cafeteria and it's so loud. And that that, no matter if you shut the doors or you keep them open, um. So we've tried to avoid putting a classroom in there because for for various reasons, um.
Lunch is a long time, I mean, there are kids.
It's from eleven o'clock till one thirty, that's what lunch goes to, it's a pretty solid block of time. Um, so that that's, those are, that's the story behind that, uh, it's. I mean, if we absolutely have, like, if we went and ended up having to have four second grades, then we would probably have to consider doing that. And putting our specialists on carts.
Predominantly, they they are working with first grade, you know, that's a big chunk of their, and the kindergarten first, so to have them over there is a little bit easier rather than. Bringing them outside constantly, the idea at one point is we thought about putting specialists out in the mod and that's. Rain, snow, everything like to bring bring little kids constantly in and out of the building is quite the headache, um, and the bathroom issue is that they want to. Because even though you, you've all driven on road trips, even though you've gone to use the bathroom at the Sanoco, you're. Being asked to use the bathroom as soon as you get back in the car or classroom, so.
Yeah, it's the same issue though for those second and third graders, right?
And well, and they kind of have them on a like a, they do a lot of stops in between, like going from their IA or from lunch or from recess to constantly like stop in the. Um.
Take a bathroom break.
They're like a big, they do like a large group of bathroom breaks for the gym bathrooms. Um, and then having the aide out there kind of helps that, and we had second grade out there two years ago, um, and it was a short amount of time. The routine was pretty solid and worked out, so this is not the first time we've had second grade out there.
And I know that we had talked about the music and art going out there and we agreed as a board that. It wasn't feasible to put art out there, um, just based on the sinks and killing and all that stuff, but. Was music considered to, like, music could take up one modular and gain two classrooms?
Um, we talked about two, but looking at, I think we, when we did the tour, we looked at all the equipment and everything and it wasn't feasible to. Take all that stuff out there.
I also don't think that they're particularly soundproof.
They're not soundproof at all, you can prove, that's why when we had the middle school world language program out there and the third grade teacher was out there. There was a big ask to never have that again.
That would open up two classrooms upstairs, we can't put second grade upstairs, um, because we've been grandfathered in. Second grade K one, two has to be on the bottom floor, but because our IAs are upstairs, we've been grandfathered in to letting them come upstairs for IAs. Uh, when we talked, when we were looking at the renovation for the building, all of the IAs were, the building would have been renovated so that everything was downstairs. Library is downstairs, PE was downstairs, art, music were downstairs.
But third grade could be up there.
Third grade, but that would only be two third grades up there and the third, third grade would be, i- it's, you know, there's. The the, it's the soft skills that we forget about when we're talking about dividing classes up, like the the culture of the building and the, so. Two third grades would be up here and one would be all the way down the modulars.
Well, to that point, second grades in the modulars away from everybody else.
But second, it's right there, the second grade's right there, like right when you come in, they're right, they're right there in that, in that hallway. And they do do a lot of things, they do come in a lot, they do a lot of team things together and, um.
Yeah, we do win, like, win is three days out of the six day cycle, so the kids are changing rooms within a grade level, across the K eight, well. Sorry, first rate spectrum, so. So they don't necessarily have their own students, you know, the can- the cannibal be in. Maybe Miss Mose Rivers and then outside for another time, things like that, so.
And one of the music room is an oversized classroom, the the Mrs. Davis's room is a little long. Well, you keep telling me it's the same size as the science room, but.
Yeah, minus the closet.
Minus the closet, that's what makes it seem a little bit bigger.
Is there a desire to, in, forgive my lack of knowledge with it, but is there a desire to get rid of the modulars at some point? Or I know you guys just purchased them, so was, what was the thinking around that from the board?
I think some of it is more, yeah, I think there's people that would like the modulars gone completely, but I think. What I understand is more the concern is they, people are concerned of classrooms being out there, they'd rather see all the. Self-contained classrooms in the building, so instead of having third grade out there, have third grade in the building. Yeah, so that. They're still gonna be around because we have to, but I I think it's more that they don't want.
I was just more curious about what was the, has the board talked about wanting to get rid of the modulars at some point? Or is that discussion not happened, because I know it came up earlier in public comment.
Been ongoing for twenty-five years, I think, but the space issue is a problem.
Yeah, I knew the space issue was, I didn't know how connected that was to the modulars.
I think everybody wants to get rid of the modulars, but there's just not room in the building to bring everybody in.
The purchase happened not because we want them long term.
Save money.
It saves next year, I guess.
I think. I don't know. To me, having taught here as long as I did and everything and talking to teachers who have been in the modulars and talking to kids that are in the modulars. I guess to me, I never saw the modulars as an issue. Not saying they aren't, but for me personally, with my connection with them, even when I subbed in them. You kind of, it's kind of sometimes nice to be in your own little world, you know, kinda, and I get it, there's no bathrooms, that can be an issue. But so try, and so, yeah, it'd be nice to have all the kids in the building, but when I think of moving art or music out there. You're gonna now have kids constantly all day long going in and out of the, so people get concerned about. You know, the safety issue of cars coming through, but hopefully that's taken care of, we won't ever have that happen again or whatever, but. You're now gonna have kids constantly coming in, and I was in that classroom you were talking about by the lunchroom. And we had kids constantly going in and out from eleven o'clock to one thirty. Because of lunch, because of recess, and it was loud. I mean, e- even if the kids are just walking, it's and the doors, so I'm thinking if kids are coming in constantly through that door. That whole hallway where kindergarten and second grade is, are gonna be hearing that noise. All day long, because through your windows, you know, you have your windows open or whatever, so it's hard, I get it. But I also think moving those out, there's gonna be no break in between that door being opened, closed and all that, so. Yes, it'd be nice to have them in here, but then it's gonna affect that whole wing and the, and the. Um, specialist, you know, the, that meet with small groups in that area and stuff. It's hard, I mean, it's hard, because there's other factors, we, you know.
Yeah, um, and also, I I don't know if, if you've been part of this story, I know that Ellen and Nancy and Kendra have heard this, but. Um, several years ago, the board, a different board, paid for an organization, um, the NELMS organization, which is New England League of Middle Schools. To come and do a full um study of the school and the practices that were happening. Um, and one of the recommendations that they had made was to get fifth grade back in the building so that. Uh, they could become more part of preparation for middle school. Um, and so that was one of the reasons we just, we moved fifth grade back into the building. They had been on the modulars for twenty-something years and um, the NELMS recommendation was, and there were several recommendations. Uh, it's just a recommendation, right, it's, do you have to do it? Um, but we did, we did try to do a lot of the suggestions that they had made and that was one of the things was to get fifth grade back in the building so that they are. Um, you know, so that the transition from fifth grade to middle school is a little more smooth. Um, we've, we've made some suggestions over the years of of um. Transitioning our fifth grade to to more of a middle school model where, you know, you're going to this class for reading and this class, or ELA with this class for sciences, class for math. Um, so that's something that we are always looking at, whether that's a best practice or should we keep our fifth grade self-contained? We, those are discussions and that we have all the time here, um, one of the things that we did do to prepare to. Align with some middle school practices for our fifth grade, we start to combine them during IA time, so our, all of our fifth grades, um. Just because you're in, you know, one fifth grade classroom, you might go to PE with somebody from a different fifth grade classroom. So we we mix it up just like we do for sixth, seventh and eighth grade, so those are some of the things that we've started to do. Um, and having them back in the building is um, li- lends to that sense of um.
Independence.
Yeah.
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 And growth.
So that was their initial reason we brought fifth grade back into the building was based off of the NELMS, the NELMS recommendation. And the board paid a good amount of money to have them come and spend some time in the building and make some. Suggestions that they felt would be good practices to bring aboard, um, and and. And then, and third grade was in the building and that's why we moved third grade outside, so that's a little bit of the history behind why we put third grade out there.
Yeah, I just, I I just don't buy that, they're, they're, it's League of Middle Schools, right, so it's, they're focused on. Middle school, so now we're taking third graders who are in the middle of their elementary education. So now we're taking third graders who are in the middle of their elementary education, right in the middle, putting them out there, segregating them from the rest of the school. And then introducing them back, it's just to me.
I don't think there's a single third grader that considers that them segregate, I think they love, actually love being out there. We, we have a lot of, several students who love being out in the modulators and some kids who missed that year, they're like, oh, I didn't get in here in the modulators, so. I mean, we have some kids that might not like that, but we do have a lot of kids that like being out in the modulators.
Yeah, I don't think it's the kids that are complaining, I think it's, I think it's the parents that.
That's fair.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, they have AC, right, like. Right, yeah, no, I mean, my, my oldest went out there and he, he did enjoy it, but I just, in terms of the. You know, moving one group out to help them be more part of the middle school and then bring, you know, then you're taking the younger kids and putting them out there, it's just. It's not congruent to me.
But how come you didn't do fourth grade?
Um, to the fourth grade out in the modulators, I, I can't remember what the reason was. I think we felt like having fourth and fifth grade up here was sixth, seventh and eighth grade in terms of. Um, and then, and then I think third grade was just that middle grade that.
Yeah, and it was that, the push for not having the younger kids on the second floor outside of IAs. So that was, that was that, we were doing all that safety stuff around the same time as the NELMS report.
And, and it is, was the league of middle schools, but fifth grade is considered middle school, that's lots of school, lots of middle schools are fifth or eighth grade. So that's, that's just to, just to thread, thread that in there, um, and that.
Oh, that's what I meant, is that they're looking out for that.
Right, they're looking at that one, through that one.
Sure, yeah, that's a very good point, that's a fair point.
It's never gonna be ideal, it's just like, to me, this year, you don't ever want a group of kids excluded from the building, but. The modulators are something we have to deal with right now, so you don't ever wanna put a group of kids out there, but we have to make a choice. And they did, like, the administration really did do a lot of thoughtful looking into it, it wasn't just a whim thought that putting third grade out there, so.
And, and I guess I'll add also that there really is that one classroom by the, by the cafeteria, that is the only classroom space that would be big enough for a classroom. All of the other, all of the other, um, specialists work in smaller spaces. You know, we have our case managers that work in small spaces, there's really no other space that a specialist or a case manager that we could say, hey, why don't you go out? We're gonna put you out in the modulators and use your space for a classroom, there's not another viable space in the building that we could put an entire classroom in. Except for the room that's down by the cafeteria.
Yeah, I, I mean, I didn't, I wasn't aware about that class being so noisy, but to me, it would make sense to put second grade in there if it was.
Right, yeah, I mean, you know me, I managed it, I went out in the hallway and. Or I opened my window and said, move away, you know, I mean, cause, but even so, just normal. I mean, teachers walking their classrooms quietly down through, it's just the noise of the door opening and closing. It was like, I mean, we got used to it, cause you just do, but there were some days it was like really, you know. Nice spring days, the kids are out sitting, you know, I get it, so, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we can continue to talk about modulators as a team throughout the year and just. Yeah, uses of the building is always something that we're trying to brainstorm and. Come up with.
Okay, yes. Moving on to transportation, I assume Ms. Crown that you're here to talk to us about that, not just to enjoy the school board meeting.
She loves being.
Thank you for joining, sorry, our elevator is down at the moment.
It's still fine.
Well, the elevator's working, it's the hall.
The hallway, sorry.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I hope your foot is okay.
It's fine.
Okay, um, so what shall we?
So I submitted all of the routes, um, the Deerfield route to Concord routes. Um, I went ahead and did a COBRAU bus based on the discussions we've had going through last winter and early spring. If you didn't see, but you were interested in a seventh DCS bus, we're more interested in getting a COBRAU bus. We, just since I emailed you Friday, found out the driver is testing on Monday. Fingers crossed that she will pass.
Woohoo.
Um, and then I will start driving with her on Thursday, the fourteenth, which is the freshman orientation student transfer day. COBRAU starts Friday, the fifteenth, so, and I can ride with her until Concord starts. Um, I've gotta figure out my schedule with Kelly, I'm also gonna get, um, some orientation kids to Deerfield, I mean, to Concord. As well, I've got routes done for that, so that starts, there's a group going next week for four days and a group going the week after, week of the eighteenth for four days.
Um, so just to clarify for the public, there is going to be a third high school bus, so there will be.
If that's what you choose to do, because I, if you choose not to do that, I can do a group for a seventh DCS bus, I just did not submit one, but I can.
That's fine.
Do that because we've done that in the past, we've had seven buses here in the past and two, right, they're not the four.
So there is another bus that we had last year.
Yep, and that's what I sent you guys and that's why I put a projected estimate, um, Kelly and I kind of went through and did some basic stops. But again, in my email, I stated it's gonna come down to ridership because, um. There's thirty one freshmen enrolled, there's about four that have said no, based on the transportation sheet that Mrs. Witty sent out for us, again, going back to last February, March timeframe. So that brings us down to twenty seven, there's also twenty seven sophomores, if all of those sophomores rode and those twenty seven freshmen rode here, fifty one, I mean, fifty four, we allow fifty one.
That's for COBRAU, okay.
The Concord buses, um, two buses were running about sixty nine, seventy kids combined with two buses, so we can even run one bus to Concord.
That was the issue that we ran into last year, it was that we couldn't have one bus to Concord and one bus to COBRAU.
Right, because.
So it's fifty one per bus?
Fifty one students on a bus, so this school year and then next school year is, will be the last two years that they've been promised transportation to Concord.
Um, obviously, you know, I don't know exactly how Dale does things or how they operate. I do think it would be helpful for us if we get a sense of how many kids are actually riding, um.
So that can fluctuate because you can have kids in it, we see with Concord, it's like it's because Concord, because that's where I drive.
Right.
So we have kids that sometimes will get out in the morning, um, with the two backpacks, because maybe they're staying at school for sports. So then we don't see them again till the next morning, but then we have kids that maybe their parents work in Concord, they have a sibling that rides and the sibling goes to work after. We don't see them in the morning, we see them in the afternoon. So there was, um, one day last year, we tried to notify the kids of when we were gonna be doing one bus when I was covering here. And we were short at Allentown and I was driving to Allentown and then meeting the other high school bus. It was one day, there was a last minute, um, I had to drive in Allentown, we had to get word out to the Concord kids. The other high school driver met me and he had forty eight kids on the bus out of the fifty one, so that's, that's a lot. You know, and so, but if we were able to notify the kids and notify the parents that, hey, we're running one bus this afternoon, the numbers were a lot less down around, you know, twenty five to thirty five students.
Is that because the one bus route was way longer, so they would?
Well, I was, I was meeting him in Allentown, I was doing my, the two Allentown runs, meeting him on a side street where we could kind of pull off and not be blocking traffic. And we would unload, um, there, he would unload his, my kids from his bus. And then he would go on to do his route in reverse and I would start my route.
Got it. Um, okay.
So you have to decide.
Yeah, what do we wanna do, peeps?
Who's gonna be riding?
So there's a few issues, right, is number one is that this is all pending the driver.
Passing, passing, right?
So.
And we had to wait for the state, as I said in the email, so if the offhand, if she fails, we would have to then rely on the state to get her in as soon as possible. Again, I can drive until Concord starts on the, I think it's the twenty seventh.
Okay, cause COBRAU starts earlier.
Concord starts, it's twenty, they don't go two days and then we've got the forty break. Um, Kelly can help supply a driver, I think she, she said through the second, cause that's the last date that a town that she covers would start. And then after that, we, we're gonna have to get creative if that's the case.
Because part of the problem is that the test dates are not what they used to be, so they're, they're just calling and, right. And being like, this is the time that's open, can you make it? And, and, you know, you're just waiting for that phone call, so.
And the state has changed their process.
It used to be where you go online and pick your test schedule and, so, that's the problem, so we, we're kind of at the mercy of the state.
With so much.
Correct, yeah, correct. So years ago when I tested you, and one person that, that rode with you, an officer rode with you, did your pre-trip with you, did your road test, came back, passed or failed. Now they have one person doing the pre-trip and then they have to wait for the other person to come in and do the drive time. So the slot is booked to cover both for the drivers that go up there, but they're at the mercy of waiting on, you know, one's running late, one's running early or whatever.
Got it.
So there, so there's that and then, um, so just my concerns is just that if we offer it and. Yeah, the driver doesn't pass, and so then we offer it up until that September second and they haven't tested again, then what happens? You know?
Right, like how do we, how are we even telling, how do, I mean, it would be Dale, I guess, like we don't even.
You would have to have COBRAU, so you would have to decide who was going to ride.
Right, like I don't even know the kids who are all going to COBRAU, so I don't.
Right, so I have a, I have a list.
Well, yeah, but that's. Ridership, right, but the first thing is like, if we had that con, like going back on and being like, hey, we temporarily don't have a driver. So until they get passed, so do we offer it or do we just say we're going to offer it pending them getting?
Yeah, I think that's.
But then, but we could technically offer it though until that date, so do we?
Right, and then if, if she doesn't pass on the eleventh and we can't get her in before.
The second.
The second, then she's gonna start driving without having somebody to help her because we're all gonna be running our routes. So, and it's something that she can't do, I mean, I can certainly go around with her and do her route with her and practice with her, but it's different between picking up a false student versus picking up live kids.
For sure, for sure.
I'm just worried about the potential gap, like.
I, I.
To passing gap, you know, like how do we?
I mean, what is, so the last word like to COBRAU families was that there was no transportation.
Correct, we didn't, we didn't commit in the spring because we, we were worried about two drivers here. They have worked on their stuff over the summer and one driver was gonna retire, opt not to, to come back and decided to come back. And one of them had card issues, so, and that's allegedly been fixed from what Kelly's been told.
So what if we send a letter and say that we're, it looks like we'll have transportation pending the driver being, you know, approved, licensed. And there may be some glitches, there may be some time where we, you know, something might happen and we can't offer it for a week or so, we're hoping that won't happen. But just like be honest about what's happening.
I think we're clear about it, I think. Just hope for the best.
And I think you decide who's gonna get that ridership, right? Are you gonna start with special ed and then your freshmen and then your sophomores and then?
Right, cause feasibly the sophomores figured it out last year.
Correct, and some of them will be getting licensed, I mean, some of them are gonna be turning sixteen and getting licensed.
I would say that's the way to go, special ed, freshmen and then sophomores.
And I'm, I mean, I'm not a betting lady, but if I were, I would say not all the freshmen are going to take the bus.
Correct, well, like I said, there's four that were on Mrs. Witty's, um, response sheet that said no, but.
Right, once, once it actually comes to show.
Say yes, that's something we don't know.
Yeah, and we, we missed it with, we didn't send that survey, didn't go out to the current, or last year's freshmen.
Oh, I see.
Right, well, right, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Kristen, you don't need to send out surveys, these are not at DCS.
No, I was saying we.
Yeah, no, COBRAU will send out a survey because they're technically.
Right, they're not DCS students, right. They're not your responsibility anymore for transportation. Well.
Concord does it.
Concord does.
We'll figure it out.
Send a survey.
We'll figure it out. Yeah, we'll figure it out.
I mean, if it, if, if COBRAU won't send out an email, then we will.
Yeah, we will figure it out.
We will make that known, that you may, maybe could ride the bus, but COBRAU doesn't want you to ride the bus, cause they won't send out an email for you.
Yeah, uh, my question is, if, for instance, a Deerfield rider cannot do their job anymore. Are we taking a high school bus to fulfill the needs of DCS? And we're going one of the high school buses, because you can't have five buses in DCS for Deerfield kid, he would have.
So what happened is similar to what we did last year is I would do my route, meet up with Dawn, we would notify, we, Concord would send out a one call now for us. Notify the families that were going on a one bus. And this is what we did last year when I was driving white and then purple. We sent out one call now and notified families, so our numbers were less, so we could get everybody on one bus, so I would do my route in the town. Dawn and I met up, swapped the kids and then I would go start a route, so I have the Deerfield route starting in conjunction with the fact that I could. Do that and then, but still get to.
So the answer is no, we would not be taking a DCS bus, is that?
Right.
We would figure it out.
So it sounds like the, what we need to decide now is do we let COBRAU students start with a bus? On the fourteenth, knowing there's the possibility that we might then take it away from them? Or do we just upfront say to them?
It would just be temporary too.
Well, no, that's what I'm, that's, yeah.
This person's gonna get licensed, it's just a matter of.
Right.
But do.
Right.
But is it, do we start them and then maybe have to temporarily stop it?
No pressure to this person.
Yeah, or, right, no, I know.
But they must pass.
I say, I say start.
I agree, I think as long as we're clear about it, that, that there may be a temporary lapse, like they either get nothing, you know? So they could get nothing for a week or two, or they get nothing for a month or, or the whole year, whatever, you know, it's.
And just as a point, um, this bus, the cost of this bus is mostly already in the budget. I think it's slightly more than what's in the default budget based on the quote, but.
Can we pull the money from the special education?
We will be able to.
We can readjust, yeah, I'm just, if there were concerns.
We should be saving money as well as the fact that we have it in the budget already.
Right, so it is in the default budget, um, because that's what the contract was for. So just if there were concerns out there that we're adding, you know, eighty thousand dollars that we had not accounted for, it is currently in the default budget.
The report was more than eighty day based on the route that I had submitted.
Right.
I showed you guys back in the spring and I think the total was around eighty three, seven for the school year.
I think in the default is probably closer to seventy something.
But we'll have, either way, you're gonna balance.
Yes, we'll figure, we will, we will figure out how to cover that, but yes, it is not just eighty thousand dollars that we're coming up with out of thin air. In case there were concerns.
Who, who, who is sending out that letter to families regarding the bus? Just so I know.
Dale or COBRAU?
Well, it's, it would have to be you guys, cause you guys are the ones putting it, cause this is a brand new.
Got it, right, the notification to families.
They should come from the SAU that this is, cause it's a choice that the school, the school board has opted to do, so it should come from the SAU that this is what we're doing. But we're gonna be restricted with ridership. And it's kind of hard to, if you narrow it down, you know, uh, special ed first, then freshmen and then sophomores. You can't say to somebody like if you, it's gonna, well, it's not that you can't say, it'd be hard to say to somebody like, if you're only gonna ride in the morning and then you're staying for school for sports, we can't offer you a seat. You know, so there's gonna have to be like a waitlist as well and whether COBRAU manages that or you guys manage it as the school board, because it's not gonna be Kelly's responsibility. Cause she's, she can't do that every single time and she's got.
Yeah, but so potentially the, the sophomore is, it would almost have to be a lottery or something like that.
Right.
Which is, is very common.
And letting him do like it's a first come, first served, then they.
I was gonna say, instead of a lottery, first come, first served would be better.
Right, and then people are actually incentivized to respond, which they don't always do, when we ask them about transportation.
Correct, so there will have to be something.
And I think it should be first come, first served, maybe saying that freshmen have preference over sophomores, but don't mention special ed. Right, that would be, I think that would.
I don't think there's a need to mention special ed.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I don't think, right, I wouldn't call that out at all. Or maybe not even say a preference, just first come, first served, because then people might be, well, he's a junior and how come he's on and?
Right, I mean, we do have juniors and seniors at COBRAU as well.
Right, so maybe we just have to say.
Yeah, but we have to move in a direction, we agreed that we're not gonna, in the future, we're not gonna be covering juniors and seniors because we're gonna expect them. By their juniors.
Unless you're specialist.
Of course.
Yeah, but by their junior or senior year. Yeah, but by their junior or senior year that they either have a license or have friends that they can ride with, right?
Have a.
But I'm just saying, I wouldn't wanna call that out, because then if a kid is a junior or senior on the bus, it's.
Cause they'll be known to their age.
Obvious that they're, yeah, or are they there?
Oh, right, right.
That's why I'm saying to kinda keep it.
Right.
Just first come, first served, and then we make the decision who who gets in.
Are you comfortable doing a draft? I'm happy to review it if you wouldn't like, otherwise you guys can send it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'll get a draft, I'll send it to you and then I'll give Cobrown a call and let them know and have them.
Good news. Yeah.
Do we have a consensus of the board, actually, I guess we should.
Yes, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Yeah, you need to vote, actually.
Okay.
Please.
I will make a motion that we have the third. Bus be for Cobrown. Do we need a motion for you guys to send a letter or no? I don't think so.
No.
Um, okay, that's the motion.
A second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, no discussion, all right.
No discussion, we already discussed it.
Now, Rick, you have a question, you want to start on the fourteenth.
That's where I'm still. But if you got.
See, I'm good with that, because I feel like if you don't start it on the fourteenth, then you might end up with everybody trying to come up with. Plans that then they don't change when the bus is available, like just start when the school starts.
My, my only word of caution is that that's a. Four day turnaround for families responding to get them sent up for the bus.
Hmm.
We're, we're at Thursday essentially before I can do anything, right, and school starts next Wednesday?
Next Thursday for them.
Next Thursday, so that leaves me Friday, because it'll take me all day to get ahold of Cobrown and get them to agree or whatever to.
So a week from tomorrow.
Whatever I need them to do, draft a letter, get it approved, get that out, and then families to be able to respond, you're, I don't know, it's two days to essentially.
But if we get the, can we get the word out on like our Facebook page and?
Yep.
And um.
And just notify families, expect a letter coming soon.
Yeah, and just let them know that there will be a Cobrown bus.
Yeah, that's an idea.
Okay.
I think it'll spread pretty quickly.
Right, I know that there are like Facebook groups too, I'm not part of them, but Cobrown, like Deerfield families at Cobrown, yeah, so.
I just, I'm I'm wondering if it might be. More feasible to have to start on the eighteenth, which is that Monday, and give me, give me next week to get the list together and finalize ridership? Cause it's gonna, it's gonna take a few days to finalize ridership.
See, I, um. I guess my whole thing is, I'm thinking of myself as a parent, and okay, my kid gets to go to school on the bus. The fourteenth and fifteenth or whatever, or. And then we find out the person doesn't pass, we now don't have a driver, and now I need to make other arrangements to get my kid there. Where if I know the very first day of school. I need to get my kid to school until there is the bus.
Right, but you said they're gonna be honest no matter what, for the first couple of weeks.
They're already, they're already. Depending on that.
They can drive the bus, it's September.
We can offer, we can offer a bus, we don't, we don't have to, it's. It's, or it's your decision if you wanna offer that bus on the fourteenth, we can, because like I said, I can drive, we have other available people to cover. Until the towns, you know, it's this staggering start for the towns, depending on what they're doing, you know, summer before, summer after, you guys, Deerfield only comes two days, Concorde does two days. Then they have a forty weekend for Labor Day, so.
Yeah.
But they.
Everybody does stuff differently.
I, I'm pretty sure parents have, because they weren't expecting it.
They weren't expecting it.
Correct, right, like they must already have a plan.
And you're gonna know in five days, too.
For the first two days.
We will know in five days, but like I understand what Justin's saying, because I can help you, you know, with.
Okay.
Getting kids assigned to bus stops and stuff like that, like I can help with all that, cuz obviously I know the town and the roads and whatnot, because you have to let parents know.
Yeah. Right.
Where they're bringing their kid to.
Right, right.
So I'm more than willing to help you with all of that, it's just it's not gonna be like our responsibility to say to decide who's riding and who's not.
Oh, no, absolutely not, right, and that's why like it's good, it, just logistically being like rationally, like.
Right.
It's gonna take me all next week to get that all worked out. To be able to put together an entire bus run of kids from scratch. And reach out to every family, collect all those responses on top of the three hundred emails I get a day, like it's gonna take, it's gonna take all week. Next week, that's what I, like, feasibly, I don't think I can have that ready for the fourteenth.
I think it's reasonable.
I mean, if you get responses and you just wanna forward them to me, like I can sort through them.
Okay.
And and get a spreadsheet going, I share that with Kelly, like that's, that's something I can do.
All right. All right. I'm gonna help a little bit.
So, does that mean that that's gonna be, you you're gonna filter that out and decide the ridership based on what are the preferences that we just?
Yeah, based on the preferences that you gave me, that's what I'll, that's what I'll go from.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So, um, but it's sending it out to essentially close to a hundred families.
Right.
Um. Sending notification out and then waiting for their replies and then building that list based off the replies, because I'll have to wait till everyone comes in essentially. Because if we only get twenty-five responses out of the hundred, we'll rate all twenty-five get in, it's easy. Uh, but if I don't give them.
I will also create a Google form tomorrow and share that with you, and that way it'll be timestamped and we'll know.
And you can, and it puts it right up in the spreadsheet, yeah.
Yeah, I can do the Google form, that way it just generates, well, I guess if you're gonna create the spreadsheet, I guess it would make sense.
Well, you can do that, you can just share it with me and give me access to it.
All right, that'll be easier then, on my end, just create myself and then I'll share it with you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So are we moving forward with next Thursday or shall we do the following week?
I think that's up to you, I think that's up to you, really.
It's up to you, no. If you, if you want to do all the fourteenth, I will make it happen, just know. I might lose my marbles between all that, but that's okay, we can make it happen for the fourteenth if that's what you really want.
See, and I don't know, I s- I guess there's still a part of me that says, send something out, we are in the process, you know, it. It has been decided there will be a bus, there are still some things that we are working out. And the bus hopefully will be ready to go by. I mean, I would even say the beginning of September, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm not one that likes to.
Yeah, I'm gonna send a letter.
Rush.
Rush things and then have a hiccup come that then we've told parents this and then. It didn't happen because Jess lost her marbles trying to do it, no, but um, you know, that a hiccup happens. And now it's the thirteenth and the kids are expecting the bus. I guess, I, I'm just one that I like.
I just don't see a hiccup, because Amy says she can do it.
Yeah.
But there's pieces of that Jess has to do too.
Oh, don't worry, that's just, I just am, I was just making sure that you guys knew that was next week.
Whatever.
Like, that's.
I mean, the majority seem to think it can, this is just my personality of.
I I definitely hear you Nancy, because I.
Well, in the, in the letter, Nancy, I can put some of that caveat in there, right, like.
Yeah.
Our goal is to get this arranged for next Thursday, please be patient with us, um, we will notify you if that date changes, um. Like I I will, I'll explain some stuff in the letter.
The only thing that that to build on what Nancy's saying is just that. Because it is such a quick turnaround, we're not giving, like if we're doing a first come, first serve.
Yeah. Right.
And the, with those preferences, if everybody doesn't respond in that time, and then some of those people that have the preferences that.
That's. Right.
Come in, then it's like, well, you didn't sign up in time and, but if then the buses only say, because only twenty people responded for the first day, but then.
That's my worry.
It starts to come in, and then we have to reorganize, that would be a problem.
Right, right, and if if we tell someone, yes, you have a seat on the bus, and then two weeks later saying, nope, you don't have a seat on the bus anymore.
And I'll think we can, I think if.
But if, like, let's say a special ed student needed a spot, but they didn't respond right away.
I think, I think especially it's something that we could reach out and find out if they actually.
I know who requires transportation, I already know that information.
Yeah, that's an easy one, I don't know where about that.
So that's something, is that something they can just, I mean, you just reach out and say, hey, there's a bus, you know, like. I mean, could say we, the cert- waiting for them to get back for survey.
Their transportation is already arranged to get them there, so it would be canceled.
Right.
Right.
Okay, and then giving them different transportation.
Transportation that's already been arranged.
Mm-hmm.
And having those people understand that, right, it's not gonna be door-to-door service, cuz we're not bringing a big bus down, or we can't turn around, it's gonna be.
Right.
Yeah, there'll be some logistics at least that I have to look out for.
Right.
I think it would be prudent to start on the eighteenth, personally, I think. Because no one knows that there's a bus, and I would imagine people have arranged transportation and could figure it out for two days.
I think is the fourteenth just freshman orientation? It is freshman orientation and then transfer student day, and then the fifteenth is all school. And then they have the weekend, and then they start on Monday full work. Which is the eighteen.
I'd be okay with going with the eighteen. Given that you've got the freshman orientation and then, yeah.
I think.
I mean, I'm hoping this is all a moot point and you're gonna tell us in five days, she passed, and it's good, you know, I mean, that's.
But either way, it's still. Have to establish a ridership.
Yes.
That's, that's the thing that's gonna take.
Right, the ridership is what, why I think we should wait slightly longer.
I mean, even if we knew today that there was a bus driver, it's still things to work out.
Right.
Yeah, and really, it's just, I I worry about the response time it's gonna take for families to get, to see the email, respond to it, and then to.
Call their friends who they already made plans with to drive their kid to school.
I do, I do agree with. There's a lot of logistics to work out.
And I do agree with Canon, I mean, if we get stuff out there in public media, people are gonna know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just, I kinda think, I mean, do you think that the document would be created and sent out tomorrow?
That's my, that's gonna be my goal, if you tell me I have to go for the fourteenth, that 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 will be the goal.
If that got sent out tomorrow, we're, that's, that's a week for people to respond.
Yeah. My goal is by end of day.
But to respond and then get assigned a bus stop.
Does that piece?
Well, the bus stops are already determined.
The bus stops are created, letting families know.
It's which bus stop you go to.
Yeah, it's already there, she's got the whole thing.
Yeah, the assignment's gonna be the easier part of. The details around the assignment, but.
Yeah, I just, cuz to me, I mean, that's only a few more days, if we say the eighteenth instead of the fourteenth, it's like, I don't. If we were gonna pause it, I would almost wanna wait even more to like really work it all out.
Yeah, I mean, there's a part of me that would say. Beginning of September, you know, after Labor Day.
Yeah, I just, I don't.
The only issue with that, though, is that she would be.
She won't have that.
She needs to do her route, she would someone.
She needs to get, okay.
It would be helpful if you do it before I start Concorde on my seventh.
But would, yeah, I get it, yeah.
So getting her a full week of doing the route.
Even a couple of days, just so, you know, I mean, even if she doesn't wanna drive the first day and I drive and pick up the kids and do the stops and. She watches and observes and whatnot, and then does the second day, well, you know, I sit and watch her drive, you know, and let her get comfortable. Cuz it is, it's nerve wracking if you've never driven before.
Sure, yeah, sure.
Like, it's the first time, so.
Yeah, sounds, sounds.
A carload of kids is enough, never find a bus.
I, I will, I'm willing to make whatever you guys want to work. You just tell me what you want.
Um. So I would propose we either start the eighteenth or the twenty-fifth. Whatever people think is best. I don't have a preference.
I don't know, I, I really wanna go for it, because I I really feel like people are gonna know, I think people have been anticipating this. Um, cuz we told them that, you know, if it's a driver, we did make mention of it in a meeting at the beginning of summer.
Right.
Um, that this was in the pipeline, um.
So you wanna go with the eighteen?
I said the eighteen too, I'm a, I'm a joking.
I would like to do the fourteen, because that, that, it automatically, like the freshmen, we could all, we, like, the freshmen are all gonna. Get a seat anyways. So if if they ride on the orientation day, then they automatically, so then it gets, it gives us even that day as well. To, you know, for people to get assigned before Friday.
Once the consensus, peeps.
I'm okay with that too. I just think the sooner the better, I I I really do.
All right, we're gonna make dreams happen.
Just making it easier for the parents.
I mean, if you, I need you to be honest about what you think you can accomplish.
I will make the fourteenth happen.
Okay.
If you were, if that is seriously what you want, that, we will make it happen, it might be a little ugly, we'll make it happen.
And. Honestly, the people have been really bad at, um. You know, the surveys and all that stuff, so it's like we've given opportunities that they haven't responded to, and so, you know. I, I think if we can get this out there to everybody in a couple of different ways, like an email.
Yeah, you send me the.
And Facebook blast, you know.
Link, I can post it on Facebook, once it's created.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I will get the letter done tomorrow, I'll contact Cobrown tomorrow, and I'll get the Google form done tomorrow, and we'll. Soon as I get Cobrown's level of commitment, I'll, um. Get you everything you need.
And I, I guess I I could put, I feel like the caveat there is if you're having trouble with Cobrown, then maybe we need to back it up a little bit, you know what I'm saying?
Well, if, if, it really would just be their, I, their assistance in sending out the survey to family, cuz it's the emails and and that that would be helpful.
If they're.
If I send them the information, it should be an easy blast, but I just, um, I don't know their systems.
Right, do they have a list for for Deerfield families?
I would assume so, but, right, I don't know.
They have them broken up by towns.
Okay.
Right.
Because that's how they send a list to Kelly, is they have them broken up by towns, and so she gets a list of students, reach out, um. That goes there, that's part of the Deerfield list from them.
Got it.
So, and if not, I'll, we'll figure out another way to get, if that's not going to work for whatever reason, which it should work, but if it doesn't, we'll find another way to get their contact info and we'll send it out that way, that's okay.
Okay. Okay. Did we vote on the motion, yes?
You did, it was just a matter of you guys discussing the date, you guys need to approve the other bus routes.
Do we need another motion? Okay. So we have.
Sorry, is it, is that fourteen?
Yep, fourteen.
I guess so.
Fourteen. Fourteenth.
And you approve all the bus routes?
Um, yes, does anyone wanna discuss the other bus route, so we have three bus routes here, I assume the CHS ones are.
They just still need to.
We have six, we have six DCS buses.
Yes.
Two D, two CHS and then the CBNA, and if you like the CBNA. We can, I can patrol that if you're heavier on one part of town than another, I think you can, I can do stops.
I didn't have DCS routes.
No, I only did the.
Right, I have.
Yeah, we only got the high school ones.
I have CBNA, Concord, I have CBNA and a Concord.
Yeah, we didn't get Deerfield routes.
Are they?
I have them here.
The, are they the same?
Those in mine.
Oh, yeah, I only have Concord and CBNA. On the email.
Really, cuz I, everything was in the folder. I can bring my computer with me.
Is there any major differences?
So the biggest difference, um, is Deerfield pink buses, we're not traveling, um, Coffeytown Road and Cape Road, we're gonna do a stop at, um, one twenty-nine Nottingham. Corner of Cape Road, there's only three students, there's like two students live on Cape Road, and we don't have any more to pick up on Coffeytown, it's a time stop Coffeytown Road. Those of you that don't know it, is not a pleasant road to be traveling with a bus.
Especially in the winter, yeah.
Especially during time, um, and because we have students on Great Road now, and we have students that are getting picked up on Mountain View before you get to the other end of Coffeytown that comes out. And they can't cross because it's a, it's in the fifty mile an hour zone, so we have to be on the correct side of the road in order to pick up their kindergarteners, we have to be mindful of that. Um, and in fact, we just can't have students crossing a fifty mile an hour zone.
For sure.
So, um, that's it.
That's the only.
That's the biggest change, um. That everything else is pretty much the same as it was last year, I'm more than going to, if you guys wanna glance at these.
So that Coffeytown Road rider will go to the Nottingham Road?
It's actually, they live on Cape Road, and so I, there's only two students that live on Cape Road, and they're only like a twenty something, so they're not that far down Cape Road, so I'm hoping mom can bring them to the corner there.
And I apologize, they were in the folder, I just didn't see them, because I saw the three word documents shared separately.
Yes.
So I didn't even click on the folder, I just dropped those files down.
Correct, yeah.
So I apologize to everyone, that was my fault.
That's probably the biggest change on the routes, and then everything else is pretty much, um.
CHS is the same?
The two Concord routes are, um, a little different, um, due to ridership, um, I drive Concord too.
Okay. Yeah.
When I started doing the routes, I had over forty students and he only had like mid twenties, so we were texting back and forth, and he's like, I can take this chunk. So we're just expanding his route a little bit and shortening mine, but it brings us closer in numbers. To do that.
Okay.
Um, and like I said, the CBNA route is, um. I just get an estimated based on what we knew last year.
Right.
And again, that can, that can be, once we know ridership again, like if there's nobody riding, um.
But you. Right.
At, you know, Stagian Cotton, I can get rid of that stop and maybe add a stop further along, I just don't wanna add a lot of stops, because it is one bus, the more stops you add, the longer the route gets, and.
The longer, right.
Uh, whatnot, so we try to do larger group stops, and we did that with the Concord buses too, we've taken out a few stops that were just dead stops. That we just haven't hiked kids out in years and just made larger group stops.
Um, that's fine with me, I think it's better to have the routes approved.
Yeah.
So that people know what time they need to get their kids ready early. Um, so I will make a motion to approve all of the bus routes that have been prepared by Dale.
A second.
Any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So I'll need those routes.
Yeah, I'll share, I'll share with you, I, that was my fault.
So Candy emailed me today, and there's three new students that are not on here, so let me call those families tomorrow, and then I will. If they're riding, I'll add them on these students before you send them out. Cause one of them's woman orange, I gotta add one student, she's got, um, older siblings on green already, so I'm just gonna add her to the student list, and then. I forget, it was on Southwood, so they have three route stops, so, but I'll call those families tomorrow and.
Sure, I I will, uh, yeah.
And then I'll send, I'll send you the folder once I do it.
Perfect, that's great.
So I have, um, students' names listed at the stop, somebody take those off when I send them to you, cause you don't have to send them all the students' names, I just have them for private.
Alright, no, I don't need the students. Oh, I can copy and paste, I usually copy and paste it into a, um, um, a Google Doc, a Google spreadsheet anyway.
Alright.
So. I, whatever.
They're all spreadsheets anyways, on for Google, so I can just, I can just cut it out.
Okay. Awesome, thank you so much for joining, I appreciate it.
Alright, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your work, I know it's, it's a lot, it changes often, thank you.
Yeah, well.
Okay, um, master schedule.
Can I make a request that, um, we have Chris go before this conversation?
Oh, yes.
If there's possible videos.
Yeah. Yes. Sure, Chris, would you like to join us, we'll put the facilities report.
He's been napped.
Wake up, Chris.
Evening, everyone.
Evening, my goodness.
Alright, um. Sorry, can you leave?
We were not expecting it.
Yeah, we weren't expecting to be lined up in a list.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, got a lot of work done in literally eight weeks. My, uh, my fourteen, fifteen, sixteen year olds are fading really quick.
Wow, yeah.
They told me you were running out of tasks, so.
We, uh, we, we probably cleared, if it wasn't for summer school, I think I probably would have had the left half my crew go last week.
Wow.
Nothing with, it just, we've got a juggle around summer school, but, um. First of all, I'm gonna name off all the kids that were here, a lot of them are, one, our former students, um, of Deerfield Community School. So Aiden Alder, Cynthia Mamonie, who is also a parent here, Anthony McInnis, Lillian McInnis, George Knoll, Archibald Scrogg. Ben Stimel, Cody Jackson, Kevin Bresnahan, H A Bakjum, Marshall Lip Tech, Ainsley Fontaine, Grace. For Bella, hopefully, and, thank you, and Scarlett Mitchell, so, um, a lot of work.
Frizzella. Yeah, I mentioned Mason.
Was done in eight weeks, so.
Did you mention Mason and Ellen?
So, yeah, it was a pleasure having them this summer.
Chris, did you mention Mason?
What?
Did you mention Mason's name?
What?
I, we didn't hear you say Mason or Ellen.
Yeah, he was on my first one, yep.
I saw them here the other day, they all looked very happy. They were gonna be having a good time, yeah.
Alright, um. Solar update, we've got panels, we've got a lot of material up on the roof, we've got the junction blocks outside that is, um, in the area, excuse me, Amy. The hallway is good for you to take the elevator down, please, thank you. So right now, I just got the update from Barrington Power, we're looking at. Bringing the solar panels online between October first and the fifteenth. Not what we originally expected, we had a little lag time getting, um, the engineering stamp from New Hampshire Electrical Co. off. Now we're running into a little supply and demand issues, what we're looking at right now. Oh, I should, I should, I was gonna bring a tape of hallelujah, how, you know, because the fire alarm project is now complete. Five year, yeah, five year, we just got the approval from Chief Fisher a couple days ago. Um, the last of the smoke detectors have been installed in the gym.
Chris, I signed for that.
What?
I signed that, put it.
Uh, that was the ancil system, but, yep.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, it's all good.
He had fire on him.
So we're good, we're, uh, we have a fully updated system, and we're having an expansion, we have plenty of room on the new system to incorporate everything in.
Excellent.
Ancil system has been updated, our old system was obsolete, so that was completed today.
Which system, which system was?
What? Ancil system, our, uh, sup, fire suppression in the kitchen.
Okay.
Over the ovens, the stove top and.
Okay.
Uh, hoods will be cleaned tomorrow by grease busters. And, what else?
Who are you gonna call?
I need that Italian.
I gave you a sheet of paper.
Yeah.
Of a breakout of all of the information leading to the installation or the approval of the installation for the parking lot lighting.
Do you have, I don't know.
Did I?
It was, yeah, that's it, yeah.
So I went with a lot of local contractors, um, for this Phoenix Precast in shade concrete, two highly recommended Precast. Manufacturers in this local area, um, Phoenix Precast came in about a thousand dollars cheaper than shade concrete. I'd like to suggest moving forward with Phoenix Precast for the pole bases. Excavation went out to four contractors, wide variety of prices on there. Um, all professional contractors that do works like this or similar to it. I'd like to suggest the board approved DDX for the excavation. Electrical, we're going with pot, if you guys agree with me, but as I said before, I was gonna continue to use Pioneer Electric. For the installation of the conduit and the light poles and the junction boxes. For suppliers, um. I went out to two, three, four, five, well, two of them are the same, but I asked them to price out, uh, two different units. What helped me with the decision on the light supplier are the lumens, uh, or candles that gives you your footprint of when the light casts down onto the parking lot. Um, the more lumens, the better off you are, I reached out to New Hampshire Electrical Co. to see what they install when they're doing parking lot lights. They suggested anything from ten thousand to fifteen thousand lumens. Um, I felt we're a relatively small parking lot that's not used every night in a high traffic area, um. Northeast Electro came in, they're using the RAV, which is one of the manufacturers out there, parking lot lightings. Um, for ten thousand six hundred twenty-eight lumens, price of seven poles, seven heads and seven poles comes to nine thousand four hundred and one dollars. I'd like to suggest going forward with Northeast Electro for the supply of the light poles and bases. And I'd also like to suggest, I. Because we're approving this tonight, I don't think I'm gonna have a lot of time to shop around for electrical supplies. Uh, Pioneer Electric gave me a price for all the supplies needed for installation of three thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, which I think is fair for eight hundred feet of conduit. Eight hundred feet of three cable, um, junction boxes, I think that's a fair price, I'd like to get permission to go forward with them for supplying the materials needed. For the project, I've also reached out to the local building inspector, he wants to be notified twenty-four hours before we start trenching. To come in and inspect everything we're doing, and then a call twenty-four hours before we finish burying the last of the conduit for the inspection.
And when are we projected to work on this?
As soon as I get approval.
Okay, got it.
And as soon as, um, I, I've gotta set up accounts with. Most of the contractors to get their W nines in, so she can set them up as an account, um. The, not sure about the lead time for the, the precast poles, the, uh, light poles and light heads are almost a.
Right, materials.
Uh, a carried item, so they will not be difficult to get, so we could possibly start this as soon as next week. Um, excavation says three to four days, um, to get all of the conduit in and trenching and backfilled, light pole bases filled. And then electrician will come in after pulling his wire up and set the light pole bases and energize everything.
How, how many poles?
Seven, we're increasing the, my original was five, but we found a way, we're gonna go through two different spots for electricity. We're gonna pull power off of the mod, um, which there's a pole out there, so it basically feeds the mod, we're gonna tap off of that, put a separate panel in that. And then we're gonna go off of the red shed out here, which houses the pump station for water, we're gonna draw power off of there on s, on a separate junction box.
And so these are all poles that are on the edge of the pavement?
Yes, yep, there'll be six foot poles, four feet in the ground, two feet up above, they'll probably. Be off of the pavement, two feet, just to get them away from any plow damage or anything like that.
So not cutting the hot top at all?
No, nope.
God.
We already put two one inch lines across. Um, little access road as you're coming around the loop.
Yeah.
We installed two one inch pipes for that ahead of time, cause we knew we were, eventually we were gonna get them, so there's no reason to cut any asphalt. So we put them in early.
Okay, the twenty-seventh's the first day of school, correct?
Yeah.
And the cookout?
The twenty-fifth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, Monday, okay.
Monday.
Well, yeah, I.
Yeah, that's an informational item.
Yeah, no, I just was trying to think time, time wise.
Don't worry.
If we can get, if I had a concern, um, getting the trenching in the pole bases in.
Right.
Cause that's gonna be where the heavy equipment is gonna be in, the rest of the work can work, be done from the grass side of the parking lot.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
So if we can get the trenching involved and, um, I think we'd be looking pretty good.
Is, was this money already budgeted for, or?
Yes, I was gonna ask, um, you may not know, okay.
I would know, would not know.
It was part of the parking lot.
Yeah.
Yes.
Funds.
Yes.
Um. The name of the trust fund.
So it was.
Is it under facility improvements?
I don't know if it was on a.
Park was, there was also a parking lot trust fund.
Right.
Set up originally for this.
I don't know the definition of the trust for the parking lot, if it has to be for paving or not. I know that we've discussed this many times, but I don't.
Bring it back.
But anyway, there, we did budget for this in a trust fund, which trust fund, I'm just not positive.
I can bring it back, Mike, though.
It is either, well, this is not gonna be up to date at all.
I don't have my budget book for me.
I have my budget book, but it's not gonna be up to date in terms of spending. Um, but yes, it's not coming out of budgets, it's from a trust fund, either facilities or paving.
So is that the money that's in the trust fund, is that money that was voted on to go into, okay.
Yes. Yes. Um. Right, so it's voted for a particular purpose, that's, the only reason I'm asking about the parking lot is because you have to define what it, what it can cover. So if the paving, if the parking lot trust fund is specifically for paving, then we couldn't do it there, it would have to be the site improvement, um, trust fund. There is, we'll just have to figure out which trust fund it was intended for.
Yeah, I can figure that out.
Yeah. Um, okay. I will make a motion to approve, um, the bids as recommended by Chris.
A second.
Any discussion?
I just, I, I, as long as this money's already allocated for.
Yes. It certainly is, and it was planned many years ago.
I was gonna say.
And I'll speak to it, it's something that they've talked about doing for a long time, cause I can't tell you how long when I worked here, I would walk out and it's pitch black in that parking lot, so it really is a safety thing.
Now, I just need to find out which trust it was in, then I can plan that out.
Okay, all in favor of approving the bids?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you have the green light, thank you, Chris, for all of your work over the summer.
My pleasure. I noticed that, um, we're getting crack ceiling done, I'm not sure they're scheduled, they just got approved, um, I just approved it this week. Um, I did, I did go up with three bids, um, sorry, I don't have a spreadsheet for you, but we're going with, if you guys are okay with this, of course. Um, Alpha Asphalt for four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars is the lowest bid, second bid was seven thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And my third bid was nine thousand nine hundred dollars, so they're gonna.
Who are the other two bids, Chris?
What?
Who are the other two bids?
Oh, I'm, uh, the seven thousand dollars was JLP Seal Co. out of Barrington. And New Hampshire Black Top Sealers out of Auburn, New Hampshire. And the low bid was Alpha Asphalt out of Bow, New Hampshire, who did our parking lots three years ago, that's the last time they were a crack seal.
Were you happy with it then?
Yeah, I thought it was a very good job, they came out, there was no, um, they don't do a good job, you see where they leave roots and things like that. Um, we've had three years, it shows a lot this summer, um, so I think now is the better time to get on top of it, so it doesn't cause any heaving. Come this winter and spring.
Chris does budget, that's in his minutes.
Yes, this is just one, this is, um, out of my.
Contracted services.
Service, contracted services budget line.
Yeah, I was just asking, uh, cause I haven't heard of that company, but I have heard of that one in the middle and that they do a lot of work in town.
Okay. Yep.
And they do a really good job, um, I was actually gonna call them to do my driveway. Cause I, I see them everywhere, and they do, you know, really, so I was just asking, cause the prices are, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
Pretty different there, so, no, if you've, if you've had good experience with them, I just don't, I, I don't always like to go with the low bid.
Why, sure.
You know, but if, if they've done work before and you were happy with it, then.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to go with the low bid.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Um, do you need a vote on that?
No.
No, it's coming up.
Oh, is it, oh, is that your budget?
Yeah, I did, yeah, sorry.
And then, um. With the solar project, we have a whole disconnect panel out by the generator, and it's best for safety and security reasons to put a fencing in there. Um, I discussed it with, um, Canon, and to go over how the fencing is gonna be installed. I got a price from AQ Fencing here in town for five thou, five thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars. Um, this would come out with this, no, this is gonna be separate from. The, um, the solar project.
Right.
So this would come out of capital services. Um, it's a little more than if it was needed to go with the bid, I guess I'm just looking for your input, do you feel, I feel comfortable with this number because he was either. The lowest bid or the second lowest bid when we were looking at the fencing out here, so I feel secure with his number to go forward to get that fencing done. Um, at the correct time around the switch here.
That was not budgeted. How much was it again?
Five thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars.
We, I mean, we could move it out of one of the.
So.
Facilities or site improvement, if we wanted to do a public hearing on it, um.
Yeah, so, um, just, I, um, Chris did a, a solar tour for Justin and I.
Yeah.
Um, prior to the meeting, and, um, it was really impressive what is getting done up top, yeah, just got on the roof with me.
Oof.
I didn't think it was a big tilt until I said something about it.
She asked if we wanted to do.
You're wearing shoes, right?
I don't need to be on the roof, thank you.
No.
But anyways, from there, I could see, you know, what Chris is talking about, the fence layout and everything, and basically the, it's, there's this much space. there's this much space to open the door to access that transfer switch, so um it's basically bumping that out to, and putting a couple of other ballards in, right?
Yup.
To block that new panel and everything that's there, so I, I don't really think that we have an option to do this or not.
Right.
Um and it's, and I think, like you said, like AQ Fence was like a lower bid and they're in town and.
I feel comfortable with that, I think we'll just have to figure out if we wanna pay for it out of a budget line or if we wanna have a hearing and use it from a trust fund, but I don't, we don't have to decide that.
Yeah, you guys can take it out of the budget now, and then as we get closer into the year, or further into the year, you can decide if you wanna take that out of trust.
Yeah, just don't forget.
Squeezed for cash at some point, yeah.
Right. Yeah. That sounds fine.
It's up to you guys. We'll just take it out of Mr. Greve's um post, break the line.
Yup. Um, that's him.
Yeah, so I, I would just, just because that's something that we could probably pretty easily forget about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause it's such a small thing, right? Is, I would suggest that we do take it out of the budget, but like let's schedule that public hearing to take it out of a trust fund just so it doesn't get lost, cause we've, we've.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna be scheduling the light, the lighting for the paving, we can add it to that public hearing.
Oh, yeah, okay. So we just do both at the same time?
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be awesome.
So we bring that project's done.
Um. Right, yeah, we don't wanna do it in advance, cause we don't have final numbers and stuff.
Yes.
So we wanna vote to approve that?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to uh approve the bid for AQ Fence.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else?
Thank you, shit.
Excellent, thank you so much. Sounds like you've had a busy summer. Okay, now Mr. Greve is up.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks.
So um the press for master schedule, it's not like one page. Um so essentially the schedule is made for every single
Grade level, well, every teacher and then the grade level?
Justin. Nope, all set, thank you.
Um.
Yeah.
So each class is.
Uh so kind of a little bit of history of the schedule, um I think it's, how long are we going on a six day?
This is probably our fifth year, maybe six is my first.
Yeah, it might be our sixth year.
Yeah.
So about six years ago, um there uh we looked uh around the time where we went to uh pre self-defined middle school uh grade levels, six, seven, eight, prior to that, it was a shared configuration, um and in that process, uh we looked at the bigger picture as well. Um and the need for more common planning time amongst individual grade levels, um it was very just disjointed in the sense of um for instance, like say Nancy had her second grade class, she might have had, on Mondays, she might have had like eight to eight forty free. But the rest of the team didn't have that time, um so we, over the course of several meetings, et cetera, we came up with the idea of a, of a six day rotation, so essentially K through F. What that allowed, it allowed our middle school to be created in our, in those pockets. But it also allowed common planning time amongst every single K to A team. Um and that then allowed us to pursue more PLCs or essentially data teams working with our specialists, both math and reading um across K to A. And so through this process, we came up with this schedule, um every year it looks entirely different, I would love for it to never look. I wish it would just stay the same, but there's so many factors that play into this. Um I spend, I don't know, maybe.
Days, weeks.
Yeah, sixteen working hours, I'd say average a year to try to get scheduled to work for everybody's needs.
Mm-hmm.
Um when I first started for a little while, there was a lot of people hands in the bowl and people were had their own initiative behind making their schedules a certain way. I took it on after two or three years, um cause I had no stake in the game, um just the guy who made the schedules. Um and so, um and then now what I've done is now when I make the schedule, I work after I come up with like a beta version, I then work with the specialist across the two grade spans and we come up with we take that beta version to make it into the working product that you see in front of you. So that being said, in front of you, you have a sample from each grade level, K to five. Um so it's just one teacher, the only thing that would be different, uh for instance, on this K A schedule is library will be a different time for each teacher. So if we have four kindergarten teachers, they will all have a different library time. Um and so that's the case for K through five. Um and as you go in, you'll eventually hit the middle school. And um it's kinda wonky in the sense that we have three shorter days and three longer days uh when it comes to actually like four class times, so if you're looking at sixth grade um you'll see on A, B, and C days, they have hour-long classes. Um and then on D, E, F days, they have shorter classes, and that's a result of our, our wind block, so wind is what I need. And essentially that is all when kids are kinda divided up based on scores on data and tracking in that sense to look at what what do our, where can our specialist be most focused on, what kids need the most support, and then from there, the groups get bigger with their core teachers, so um and then for middle school, we also have what we call more the core, some more incorporate wellness, media, lit um and world cultures along with a study lab. Um so over the course of six days or the A through F, a student will have two built-in study labs. And during that time, their core teachers are available, so it's not your traditional, like what we might remember all where everybody's sitting in a room really quiet, it's kids like interaction, interacting either with their teachers or with their peers on work. So it's kind of like a, when you walk into a room, it's not a dead silent room, it's kids actually getting their work done, um either current work or future work or in some cases, past work.
Yeah.
Something else you'll notice is the um, the K to five schedule, looks like it has blanks in it, uh that is, that's filled in by the teachers, the, the uh this is our first year where we have, um have worked with our specialists to plan math all the same time for, for a grade level, so for example, in kindergarten, math will be nine to nine forty-five. That way our specialists are available, what happens is that nobody wants to teach math at the end of the day or in the afternoon, so that, you know, they, the schedules were, it was hard for our specialists to get into all classrooms. Um and we also planned ELA the same block every day. Uh and then all those open blocks are, are areas for teachers to put in social studies time, science time. Um you know, carryover from an ELA time, and then the other, the other one was the uh ELA block on library days.
Yeah, so um so after you get through uh the actual grade levels, um we get to IAs and then after the IAs, I think it's the last page of the IAs is media uh library slash media lit, and so these are all the times that uh students go to library, so for instance, earlier when I say kindergarten has their own dedicated time, so you'll see that twelve forty to one thirty-five at one point in that day, those kindergarten kids are in library with this matsu. Um and uh her schedule's kind of fluid in the sense that she's also in classrooms or planning with other teachers, so if you see like down maybe a little bit more downtime on her schedule, it's because she is constantly planning with other grade level teachers. Um she, she, she's probably the most, a workhorse person I've ever seen, it's amazing. And on top of that, she's doing a lot of art grant writing, so.
And she brings preschool upstairs too.
Yes, and she'll meet with preschool. Um and our music teachers, if they can make it work, they too go into preschool, but not on a regular basis, it's not like on a day they're, they, they'll find they'll work with the preschool and they will s- uh go in and introduce some instruments, sing some songs with them, things of that nature. Uh given a certain time of year too, so if it's closer to December, they're obviously not in there, cause they're getting ready for the winter concert, et cetera. Um so it's a lot of the process, if you've never seen anything like this, um and there's no way, I, I know there's some like high schools and certain schools that would use like dedicated programs for stuff like this, I've talked to a few administrators. Uh ours is so, there's so many moving parts, um and we're constantly trying to adapt to the schedule to best suit our students. Um like working with the specialists this year, in our first year, I, we kinda dabbled in it last year, but our specialists were new, some of our specialists were new. Um so there's some changing roles, uh so, but having their buy-in now and making sure there's a dedicated time, because if you like on the kindergarten uh there was never, I never put in ELA or math, it was just your IAs lunch, it was just kind of more open. So this is the first time like we're look, um and our specialists have done such a great job with the data and looking at groupings and so we're going to that next level of, of tier-two intervention to help support a lot, a lot of our students.
Got it. Um. For like kindergarten, for instance, is recess for lunch? Are those planning periods for the teacher or do they go to recess?
Um so the lunch, um in part of the, the contract for teachers, they get a thirty-minute lunch.
Right.
Um the kindergarten teachers for, usually for the first two weeks, actually eat in the cafeteria with their students. Um and that's just get them used, used to it, and it's on their, like that's, they chose, they choose to do that. Uh recess, um they're, for the most part, every teacher is outside with their grade level. Um fifth grade is the only outsider on that, they like to work with the, me on making a recess and lunch schedule, so sometimes the teachers are, will do lunch duty and then during recess, they'll take their lunch. So, but they're the only grade level that's really ever asked for that, and so there's something we just continue to do.
Got it. And so their planning period is when their students are at IAs?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
And lunch is a half an hour.
Right.
And then recess is a half an hour, and often paraeducators will take their lunch during recess time, so that um so a lot of times our paraeducators have recess duty along with other staff, but um so they while the teachers are having lunch, they're maybe on lunch duty and then uh usually three days out of the six day, Brian does a nice job with the duty schedule, so you don't have lunch duty every single day, you have it on A, B, and C day, and then somebody else is on D, E, and F day.
Okay.
Um we.
Not the most favorite uh job.
I can't imagine, yeah.
To be in the cafeteria with.
Opening a hundred.
Syrup is the worst, that's why waffles come pre-syrup now. And then recess at the end of the day for kindergarten is something that we've been doing for, for several years now. Um and it's, it's, you know, getting the kids ready, especially in the winter time.
And that was a request by the kindergarten teacher to look at, um and in, during their day, they'll also like kinda steal a little bit of time here like that.
Free choice time.
There's choice time.
Always choice time, that leads into recess, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it's um, they'll, they'll take advantage of nice days and such, et cetera, and be outside with them, but um they ask for the recess to be at the end of the day. Um we also, for the most part, try to keep recess to grade levels of similar age. Um so like twelve, like one thirty to one forty is middle school, so they're coming in while the kindergarten is going out, so you're gonna have eighth graders out there playing football or baseball or football, you know, looking here.
I have to say, one thing that concerns me is I don't see science or social studies in any of these, I know that you're saying that they could be in open blocks, but.
No, they, that's where it is going, but we didn't wanna schedule it for them, they schedule it.
Yeah, that's where it is.
Okay, cause you said sometimes they could do ELA, they could do this, that, I mean.
No, there is, there is an extension of ELA on the days, that's what Brian was saying on, so if you look at first grade.
Yeah.
Um.
Where you thought down below.
First grade has, has math, they have library on D day, and then you look down and they have, um they have math block is shorter, um than it would be, so on the other two days, they might extend, they might extend their math block a little bit further. But science and social studies is incorporated in every class or K to five.
And a lot of teachers are now thinking using also their writing block to incorporate science and social site themes into their writing as well.
Okay, okay. I mean, just, cause I look at this and I see two PE, two art, two music, and there's, you know, five ELAs, five math, and there's no science and social studies and.
That was up to the teachers. He scheduled in things that weren't an option for them to move around.
Yes.
So because he worked with the specialist that first grade, you have to have ELA nine o'clock, because that's when intentionally the specialists are available, so
That's when the specialist.
That, these were up things that they couldn't move around for scheduling.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, cause you know, looking at the science testing scores, they were pretty abysmal for the younger grades, especially even more so than middle school.
Yeah.
So I just hate to see, we used to do so much science in this school, I just really hate to see that being lost.
Um are there other questions or discussion about the lots of schedules?
Uh the tech lit and the wellness, uh.
Yeah, so tech lit, um that, uh so she will teach each um one section for each grade level, and then the rest of her time is for her part of the position of running the building for all things technology, so she's like so.
Oh, it's not just the teacher.
You're correct, yes, yeah, so she is in charge of
Alma, sign and dismissal.
Have Alma, everything, yeah, yeah, so that's, that itself is like a full-time job, and then this is kind of that little carved out time for her to actually take the time to teach, um like one of the things earlier was about the AI, like so that's something that is really being focused on now with, with our middle school um students, uh responsibility and things of that nature, nature, um and in uh Beth in the library will also be working with Olivia on, on combined projects and things of that nature as well across the, you know. Olivia will come in and work with during Beth's time with students and vice versa for the middle school.
Yeah, media lit and tech lit, there's a lot of crossover.
And wellness is not a full-time position, it's a, it's a, it's a point seven five position, so that's why that schedule is, is more open.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. And fully, um we might come up, uh like um our IA teachers, um outside of art, um the IA teachers kind of like to stick to one grade level. So they, what they have like less, you know, so their planning is like, I'm just gonna plan for second grade, I'm not planning for second and third grade at the same time. Where the art teachers prefer to do it that way, so it's just kind of preference, uh it could go either way, um so it's just kind of the preference of the the team and how they, they look at um their curriculum.
So for music teacher, what's the difference between plan and IA planning?
Um so IA planning is when they all are available together, um so they do a lot of cross-curricular work, um and so they will do planning, and it's kinda just built in like that, they don't have to necessarily meet every day, and it's most likely they won't meet every day. But the idea was to create that time so that when they do, for instance, our, our, just something simple like our, um our book, uh what, what do we call it, the book Olympics or when you win, you try to win every year?
The challenge.
Oh, 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 the reading during the, yeah, okay.
The, yes. Yeah, so like just our, like things like that, where it's whole, like.
By the way, I won this year.
You won this year, this year.
She doesn't try to win, she just won.
Thank you, thank you.
Um but it, just simple things like that, where they'll, they'll all get together and they'll plan out bigger, larger activities for the school and, and use that time to focus on, on bigger projects amongst themselves and, and all the IAs together.
So is that pretty typical for them to have two plannings blocks per day?
Um.
Plus lunch?
Sometimes they have three.
Yeah, it just depends, um like you notice that, um like that, that one that IA planning time is only half an hour. All the teachers are, through their contract, there's fifty minutes, so um so some of them, some of our IA teachers are advisors for our middle school and some are not. Um it just depends on how the, it all shakes out with the grade levels. Um so some will have one year, for instance, um where if you look at, like T, one year, this one teacher when might have a few more minutes of planning throughout the course of six days, and the other one will not. And then the next year, I flip it, so kinda over the grand scheme of things, it's equitable, but not necessarily in that given year.
Yeah, it just seems like three, three planning sections in one day. It just seems to be a lot, like in one, one PE teacher has that twice a week and they have two every other day. And then same is true for music.
Yeah, and there's that music will head into preschool, like they'll drop down into there, so I don't put that in the schedule for them, cause that's just a fluid thing that they will do together. That's just a fluid thing that they will do together.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, thank you so much for sharing with us, appreciate it. Um moving on to board reports, um I know, Kenan, that you wanted to discuss board assignments or. Committee assignments, um so I don't know if there's something you wanted to discuss about that or we can move on to board reports.
I just wanted to make sure that we are all. Able to fulfill our responsibilities on our committees and. Um and that we're communicating together, like if we're not able to, I just I think that there was a lot of um. Lack of communication, like you know, just obviously it was like a big when when you weren't able to be here.
Unplanned.
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course, no, and it's totally understandable, but it's like s- somebody needs to communicate and not you in that moment, right? Like I would think that it'd be Patty at the time and I just think there was like. I did two meetings and then it was like I didn't receive the um agenda to go for the next meeting. And then so then I asked Patty, I'm like, hey, I haven't seen and she was she was like, oh, well, that's cuz Kendra's back. It's like, well, somebody should have let me know that Kendra's back, you know, like and. Um I just I got a lot of feedback about the M B C meeting that happened, I don't know if that was last week or. Again.
What was the feedback?
That you were very unprepared for the meeting, that. Um you you hadn't participated in the previous meetings, hadn't watched the previous meetings.
So I had I had watched the M B C meeting, so I'm surprised to hear.
No, no, our meetings.
Oh, yes.
So um and not able to answer the questions that were proposed and.
Yeah, so a few things about the M B C meeting, um. It is the first year that we're doing sort of full calendar year meetings for the M B C, this is not typical. Um this is a new schedule that was proposed, so they wanted to see expense reports. Okay, that's fine, but like I don't create them, I don't know what is in the expense report, I can't explain why. This budget line is different than this budget line in the expense report, right, so during a typical M B C session. We have Jess there, we have Amber there, we have Priscilla Whitty there, um so. Yeah, I'm sure I did seem unprepared cuz I have zero idea what they're gonna ask, we hand them a report that I have no. Input into and then they ask me a hundred questions about it and I have no idea what, how did we create the expense report?
Yeah, I think a lot of it was just um and again, I'm not faulting you for not being here at the meetings or not having.
Sure.
Watched those meetings, that's not it, it's just the communication, I I think somebody on the board is the alternate for that, right?
Yeah, Ellen and I had discussed.
Communication about maybe Ellen fills in or.
And Ellen was going to fill in for that meeting and then asked if I could go, it it is my responsibility to go. And Ellen had graciously filled in for me several times um and then had a conflict that day. And so I was like, sure, I will fulfill my original obligation, which is to go to the M B C. That being said, if um as I said, when we were picking committee assignments, if someone wants to take the M B C. They are more than welcome to, I mean, it's it's an extreme amount of work, it's a straight extreme amount of. Stuff that you have to be prepared to answer.
Yeah, I wanna I I'll jump on what Kendra said too, cuz when I covered for her, I had the report. And it's true, I mean, we didn't even have meetings in July to go over the report, so I had no. Background from Patty or anything about this, there were a couple of things I had questions of and I emailed real quick and got some answers, but. You you don't know exactly which line they're gonna pick on and so you're sort of guessing, well, this one looks like I got a lot of money in it, so maybe they're gonna ask about that. Or this is way, a lot have been spent here, you know, but but you're just you're just out of the blue cuz we don't have that meeting.
Right, and there's not anyone there.
Right, and this is very new cuz this was just the new chair wanted to try this out this summer, about meeting every month and. It I'm realizing it's difficult cuz we don't really have the board meetings to have the discussions that they might wanna know about.
Well, and and I think it was interesting conversation, but a lot of it was outside of the scope of what the M B C covers, so. Preparing for a discussion that is not even staying within the bounds of the M B C is very complicated. So, I mean, they were asking about decisions that were made that the M B C has no say over. So they were like, where are we paying for the modulars from? And I'm like, I know it was discussed at a meeting, I don't know which line it was discussed, but this is not an M B C question. So I was not really prepared to answer that because it's not, it's not part of the M B C process, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just, I think a lot of what they were looking for answers for is somebody that was. Had participated in the meeting probably would have known the answers to most of those.
Sure, and I I would say, I think if you asked, I'm surprised to hear this criticism, I didn't hear any criticism about that at the M B C meeting or afterward. No one approached me about it, um and I think if you ask most M B C members. I am always very prepared and have answered every single question the M B C has ever asked me and have given them lots of information and spend a lot of time. Explaining and you know, inviting them to meetings where they can ask any questions during the budget process. But again, if someone would like to take over the M B C, I'd be more than happy to give it up. It is is an extreme amount of time and effort in in budget season. So but I will warn that, so like in the month of October, there are M B C meetings every Tuesday. We have our board meetings on Wednesdays and then there is a full S A U meeting two Oc- two Wednesdays in October, so it's. Four weeks of two meetings in a week, so if someone wants to take it, that's fine, but it is a it is a big commitment.
Yeah, I I would just think like, I don't think that just because you guys are the committee members for that specific committee. That if she had a uh conflict and you felt unprepared for the meeting, then like you could ask somebody else, you know?
Yeah, I don't think I felt unprepared, I ju- I mean inherently you feel unprepared cuz you just have. You're just walking into a meeting where people could ask you anything about the school.
Yeah, but we, I mean, there were two meetings that you didn't attend or watch and.
I did watch the, I I watched the first, I had been making my way through the second, they were very long meetings. Um and it still wasn't clear to me always what decisions were made during those meetings, nor were they particularly relevant to the M B C. So I didn't feel unprepared for that meeting, but you'll always be unprepared because people ask you about. Any any single amount of money that comes up at the school and I don't have the answers for that and typically. There were a lot, there are new M B C members um who haven't been through the process before, but typically, you know, we send them their report in advance. If they have questions, especially when we don't have Jess and Amber there, they email me with their questions. They say, in advance of the meeting, can I understand this? And then we say, of course, here is all the information and we gather all the information for them. Um and I said this at the meeting that like I don't necessarily, I don't disagree with having the meeting, but. It's not that useful because we don't have our administrators there and quite frankly, I would not ask them to come for a year-round meeting cuz it's not typical. For M B C, um it's typically during budget season, so they, we can continue to have M B C meetings. I don't think they're going to get the answers that they want unless they email us in advance.
Oh, that's good feedback.
Yeah.
Hopefully, yeah, we can share that.
Yeah, and I said that during the meeting, so I don't know, the chair of the M B C has not been at either of the summer meetings, so I don't know if he. Watched, I assume he watched them um and got that feedback, but um it's hard to prepare. In advance of a meeting where you just have no idea what issues will come up in the first of the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I just, the last thing I'm gonna say about it is just that I think as the chair of our board, I think. Be representing us as we instead of they and not casting shade on specific members. You know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
The guy that said that he was gonna come in and save us seven hundred thousand dollars, I never said that, so I don't know who you else you would be referring to.
I don't know, I don't specifically know what you're talking about, but I think, oh, I do know what you're talking about. Um that was not an actual scenario, but people always run on saying, we're gonna save this much money and then it. It bites us in the butt fifteen years later when they saved seven hundred thousand dollars one year, but at the cost of what? It was just an example, there was, it was not specific to to anyone on the board, but. Um I think I only referenced they when we were talking about the modulars cuz I wasn't there to vote on the modulars, so I don't. Yeah, I couldn't justify necessarily what we what we did or what we what budget line it came out of.
Surplus.
Yes, um yeah, I think I, you know, I don't, I have not heard any of this feedback, so if there are. M B C members who are concerned, I would require, I'm not require, I would request that they reach out to me directly so that we can have this conversation. Um and they can provide feedback to me, um either at the meeting or after the meeting or by phone call or whatever. Cuz otherwise, I'm just answering to who knows.
Yeah, I and the, I know I said that was the last thing, there was, there was just two things that were misrepresented about. The stipend for.
Yes, I I read the um the C B As afterward and there is a statement for health insurance.
Right, so and then um.
But again. People are welcome to bring up health insurance during the M B C meeting, do I have every single answer about what we cover for health insurance? No, I mean.
No, I know it's a lot, but it's.
It's based on my memory, my memory was no, and I think I said, no, well, I don't know, which is true.
And the other thing was about the um the tuition reimbursement for teachers, uh the course tuition reimbursement. Is there is, there is a cap on that and.
Yes, there is.
Can easily be budgeted for because there is a cap on it.
Well, the cap, I think, is thirty one thousand dollars per teacher, so.
Yep, for the whole budget.
For the whole budget, cuz there are some years teachers don't get it that want it because it's kind of first come, first served. And I mean, and I don't know if it's with work, I know with workshops it was that way too because. Sometimes there's not a workshop till the end of the year that you think you wanna go to and then you find out the money's already been spent and so you.
Right, so there is a.
But there's a, when it's gone, you go paying for it yourself if you really wanna go.
Right, I'm, you know, my point in a lot of that saying we can't budget for it is we don't know. The exact cost, so people are looking at this and saying, why did we go over budget here, why are we under budget here? And the answer is, we don't know what people are going to enroll for, we can budget for thirty one thousand dollars a year. We can budget for every teacher taking eight hundred dollars of um conferences, but we don't always. Because we, you know, if historically we haven't been spending that much money, we might not budget for that, we may budget for five hundred dollars per person.
And last year, we were really tight, 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 like people weren't doing the kinds of things they normally would because we had some huge expenses that came up in the beginning of the year, so.
But again, this, I've not heard this from the M B C, so if people are concerned about it. Um if they think I have misrepresented someone, I would request that they email me because.
That's a pretty nuanced question to answer.
I mean, I have the history and I know, I could have answered that very easily.
So typically, at an M B C meeting, I would say, Kristen, what do we do here? And then Kristen creates that part of the budget. And would be able to answer, so I can answer to the best of my knowledge or to the best of my memory, having created the budget last October. But am I going to have every single answer? No, no, it's, so I don't.
I wouldn't expect you to have every single answer, of course, I just I just said that out loud so that to correct that.
Sure.
Information that was presented incorrectly, that's all.
Yeah, and I mean, again, they're welcome to ask any question they want. Is is the historical spend on tuition like the best use of our time in a summer meeting? I'm not sure, to me, it's a better discussion when we're talking about the actual budget. Um but that's not my, just my opinion, so.
Can I say this answer for the record? Do you want me to answer this?
So we're gonna, we're actually gonna talk about that on this uh.
Addition to informational items.
Okay, okay, perfect, thanks, Jess. But again, if someone wants to step up for M B C. It's it's an incredibly fun position.
Move on.
Alright, moving on, uh P T O update.
Hi.
Hello.
Um I know you mentioned that the barbecue is gonna be under information.
We are welcome to talk about it now.
Yeah, would you like to do that?
I would love to.
Thank you, um so it is the twenty fifth and I think, Kenan, you might be the only new one in just, right? So I don't know.
Yeah, cuz Missy was here last year for it, yeah.
Um so every year, we did back-to-school barbecue on a Monday before. And serve, so it's really a blast, and this year I'm gonna convince you all that you want name tags. Um so I guess I just wanted to um talk about some of the P T Os, we've kind of planned a little bit at our P T O meeting and I know. Kristen's been working with Gail in the kitchen to order all of the materials, burgers and hot dogs and stuff. P T O usually provides the cookies and the watermelon and the people to help set up and serve. Um but then we usually ask you all to bring all of your coolers and ice. For the drinks and to keep all the stuff cold while we're cooking it.
And grilling utensils.
Yes, and your grilling utensils, and we probably have to find two more.
Propane things.
Things, cuz we usually only have two here and they, the girls each take two, so we need four or two. Cuz we did move inside last year, but.
Cuz of rain.
We're praying for no rain. You can't really have a barbecue inside, that's just not right, so as much as it stinks to haul all of the stuff out of the cafeteria. Out front, I don't know, it's a barbecue, I think it's there inside.
What time is it?
So officially, it's four to six is when they do the open house, but last year, we tried to have at least. A first round of food at three thirty for the teachers, so they could eat, then get back to their classrooms before any parents were out in the building. So we usually get here by two to start setting up and bringing everything out cuz there's, there's a lot of things to haul. A lot of boxes of burgers and buns and tables and things like that. And then it's over officially at six, the open house portion, but the advertisement for the barbecue usually says until seven because some people like to linger and chat.
I think I just, I think I got it, I was just looking for it before cuz I got something in the mail.
Teachers have put it in their back-to-school language, but I I've been waiting until the board has knows.
Yeah.
Before moving, before sending some, so I have bus routes to send out and I have barbecue information to send out, that's going out first thing tomorrow morning.
It made me think of it because, aha, I do have it, back to school barbecue, four to six.
I mean, so many people come out for the barbecue in the open house, it's really, really amazing, so it's a really good day and it's. It's great to see all of the people, I mean Patty was always the bun lady.
You get to do the buns.
Got to see almost every single person back in the open house cuz she was in that spot and it was so great. The rest of the board sometimes hide spot.
I I was gonna say, I've been, I've been on grill duty.
I served.
I can do the burgers. Oh, I will be wherever you put me.
Alright, Missy and I served cookies, we were the cookie vendors.
Probably will. And I dropped because of this.
Um, cool, so what you need from the board is coolers.
Ice.
Ice.
Grilling utensils.
Grilling utensils.
Propane.
Two propane things and the ones I shoved didn't get used last year, so I didn't make it in the shovel for me, so it's in the behind, but they're probably full.
Yeah, I can check them off.
And the other two don't matter, so we don't go through that much.
I was gonna say, we don't.
If I remember, and the other two just have to like complete the.
Circle.
Whatever, right? If that makes sense, I'm saying the right thing.
I can bring one.
Yeah, most important is you all come.
I think I have a spare one too, so I'll bring one.
Okay, I mean, Mr. Mike sells them, so.
We have like three sitting at home, so. You know, I have those two honking coolers, so.
Yes. I got a cool donation this year, is it related to Element? L M N T?
The drinks?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're donating the powder packets to add to our water, so I'm gonna have that to go with the water.
All right.
Yeah, they're like electrolyte drinks.
And I got um, fruitables, fruit crunchables or something like this from PTO Today, it's like the dried apple chips.
Oh, yum.
So we'll have some cool extra stuff, okay?
And the, and I think Bonnie is working.
Yeah, exactly.
Boy Scouts have already reached out saying they'd like to come and set up a tent, and I know Bonnie does a couple of different things.
And usually DPR will come to talk about the after-school program.
Yeah. Hey, Gail comes to one day, he's three.
I think he did come last year, and it was, yeah.
Amy was in the lobby.
Yeah.
It's a really great day to see so many families, because, well, it's a from middle school, I don't think middle school comes. Really.
Not as much, but they've, there were some there.
They have younger siblings.
Yeah, they get dragged along, where they come for the free food either one.
We're the ones that wanted two cookies. One, come back later.
Awesome. Anything else? Cool.
Ready to start?
We, yeah, thank you, sooner than we even know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, exec board.
Um, at our last, because it's public now, um, at our last exec board, we decided to keep um, Patty on, like as a consultant, and because we're Jess's brand new, and our other superintendent still is relatively new, um, it's for ten thousand dollars, and so if Jess needs things, she can contact Patty, and figured it's cheaper than using the attorneys. Because if you have a question and you call the attorney, their hourly fee is much higher. So this way, it gives um, Jess a resource um, to reach out to and get questions answered quickly, you know, like, you know, it's because Patty's been through most situations, so, yeah, so it's being a consultant.
Where does that money come from?
Uh, between all five districts.
Oh.
The SAU budget, yeah.
So the ten thousand is between all.
Yeah, it's spread out overall, yep.
Yeah, it's minimal cost usually, yes.
So, and that was the only thing we did at that last meeting.
Okey-dokey. Thank you. Uh, principals report.
Yeah, um, I did my enrollment sheet for you that I do every um, August.
Oh, I have my principal's report too, but I'll be speaking to this, yeah.
Give the quick overview.
I know, I have so many things to step over. What's that?
To give the quick overview, see there he.
You forgot Nancy. Oh, you forgot Nancy.
That's all shared.
No, 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 I have, I have plenty.
Chop liver.
High come.
Yep, thank you. Yep.
All right.
Um, so it's a fairly short um, principal's report, I'll have a longer one as we get closer to the start of the school year. Uh, we've had a lot of summer curriculum work um, being done during the school year, so I'll do the enrollment sheet first, since you're all looking at it, how about that? Um, so um, this is something that we've created, this is what goes in the budget binder every year. Um, I update it throughout the course of the year, especially for October first. Um, we have um, for our preschool enrollment, uh, we have fifteen three-year-old in the three-year-olds classroom, and we'll have nineteen, that will change as the year starts, and students, uh, we find out about students. Um, oftentimes after child find, we get um, some new students, so um, in our, in our kindergarten group, as you can see, um, we're up to forty-eight. Um, the green right there only signifies that it's more for administration, um, because so, some of the students haven't completed the Alma um, information, so they're not showing up necessarily in Alma yet, but um, I have, I have Candy and I work together, I have lists of new students that have moved in, um, so I make sure that I place them in, um, in different classrooms, so.
So you have more, so you have more than forty-eight, you just don't have them in here yet?
No, those, that, that's, we're at forty-eight right now.
So, okay, so did you lose students then? Because I think we were up to eighteen each kindergarten class, if we had three, this is, if this was in three, it'd be sixteen each.
I don't think we were up to eighteen, eighteen, the, last year's class was um, kept climbing, but this year's.
Yeah, last year's classes were eighteen each.
Okay, I just thought we had the discussion, we went to go to four, that we said it was, looked like it's gonna be eighteen each class, and that's why we said go to four.
We don't know our numbers, so.
No, I, I think we were saying that we'd like to keep our class sizes small, but last year, we decided to go to three kindergartens. Um, and we ended up with a lot of kids that registered, and we ended up with large kindergarten classes. Um, and so going into this school year, we felt it was important to keep our kindergarten small. That's, that's been our argument, our, our, not argument, but our side. Knowing what kids are, the kids' needs are. And we still might get some registrations coming in. And last year, I think we were, we were sitting in the same place, um, and then we ended up getting we ended up like, the first week of school, we ended up with four or five extra students that we had not anticipated. And that, that was, that worried us going into the school year. Knowing how big the classes were last year. Um, so our first grades, that's the, um, our big group that just um, came out of kindergarten, and then um, I mean, all the way down, I don't know, do you have any, what questions you might have? There's an, an eighth grade, a new eighth grader.
Can you speak to, I know you and I talked earlier about how many kids have moved in over the summer?
Yep, so I have, um, we've had four students transfer out. Uh, one student, um, two students um, moved to different, three students moved to different communities, and we had, it was a preschooler, another preschooler. We've had ten students move in over the course of the summer. We have a first grader, three second graders, um, a third grader, a fourth grader, a fifth grader, an eighth grader, and two kindergartners.
Thank you.
Yeah. That information is also on here on the bottom there, K to five, new enrollments and sixty-eight enrollments, and I broke that out into kindergarten and then first and fifth. And then K to eight withdrawn is four students.
And that's in these numbers?
Yeah, that's reflected.
Yeah, it's not some more, right, okay.
Um, I always try to um, tell people where, where kids are moving from, we've had the four students that are moving out are, are moving out because of, they're moving, not because they're going to a private school or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Ready for your report?
I am. Um, so several, we've had several teachers in over the course of the summer, um, this is the curriculum stipend line that I, uh, that we use um, to pay for summer uh, work. Uh, teachers, uh, every grade level usually comes in at least once, if not twice during the summer to work on either math or ELA. In addition to that, we have had um, some social studies uh, work being done at the middle school. So our Andrea Clinch, our reading specialist for K to, for four through um, eighth, and Amanda Pruswinski, and Julianne Bourgeois, who worked K to three, have worked with um, teams on ELA work, simplify writing. Sam Wilson, who will be our new math specialist, has worked with her K to three on, as we prepare for year two of Eureka Square. Um, Lindsay Maxfield, Matt McCabe, and Amy Parkinson from the SAU have, they're the ones that have been in to do work with our sixth grade team, seventh grade team, and eighth grade team on social studies. And in the next few weeks, we were fortunate to get some Title II grant money to um, support some work being done at the middle school level. So uh, we'll have, we'll be talking about things about advisory and probation and update those, some of those procedures. Um, and then um, next week is our new faculty orientation, a new hires week, day will be at the Pembroke Academy. So everybody in the, in the SAU that has been hired uh, to start the school year um, will go for a day at Pembroke Academy, and Amy Parkinson heads that work, and they learn about all the systems in the SAU, like One Call Now and Alma and Frontline and um, all of those things. And then they will spend the next day here at DCS, and we'll do a new hires day here for a couple of hours. Um, we just talk about some things that are DCS, um, important to DCS. We give them a tour of the building and show them where all the bathrooms are, and where all the refrigerators and microwaves are, because where all the copiers are. Uh, make sure they have all the things that they need, their laptops and their key fobs and all of that, so um, our staff will return on Monday, the twenty-fifth, uh, all certified staff come down, back on Monday, the twenty-fifth, that's typically a day for teachers to work in their classrooms. Um, and then on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, all staff will return, including our paraeducators, so we usually start the day with um, a, an all-staff meeting and talk about things that happened over the summer, and then setting some things up for the school year. Mr. Greve always grills the leftover burgers and dogs for the staff to have um, uh, for lunch that day. Um, and just to confirm, the back-to-school barbecue uh, and open house will be that Monday, the twenty-fifth. Uh, so that's the first day teachers return, um, barbecue will go four to seven, the open house will go four to six. And we do still have one paraeducator position available. Um, we've been able to fill um, the openings that we had, and the position that is available is a classroom aid position, so it's not special education um, specific, it is um, working in, it'll be working in a secondary classroom um, to support the students and the teachers there.
Great.
Thank you.
Um, CRB, you guys have not.
It doesn't start until October.
Okay, we already did facilities reports, we'll move on to policy. Um, I did send out an email, hopefully everyone saw it, that there are two policies that we need to act on tonight, because they are newly signed laws by the governor, and they need to be in place before the school year starts. So the AB New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights and J I C J, unauthorized communication devices um, need to be reviewed and approved before the school year starts. Um, was everyone able to review them, and is there any discussion that people would like to have? So these are the versions that are provided by the New Hampshire School Board Association, so it's their recommended policy based on the laws that have been enacted.
Um, I, I had a question on the first page, A one-three, I just didn't really quite understand it, so.
Parental bill of rights?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, on that one, first one. It says, request that a minor child be enrolled in a public school, other than the public school assigned to them by their residence to avoid a manifest educational hardship. Is that just like what we just went through with the?
Yeah, so that is a parent request that would ask for a change in school assignment.
Okay, so it's what we went through, and then it spelled out, not to say, okay.
All of these items in the parental bill of rights are not, not, aren't anything new, they're standalone rights, they all are buried into other laws.
Yeah.
They just consolidate them to a list.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that was more permissive. Okay, all right.
So the way that that's written though, is it, I, I saw the same thing when I read it.
Yeah.
So does that mean that they don't have to go through that process?
No, they do, what it's saying is that a parent has a right to request that from the superintendent.
Request it.
Yes. Yeah, there's a process of the child.
Right.
Pathway that you can go to before you get to manifest.
And that's what it's referencing, that's all.
Okay.
So, I, and I, I'm, uh, nine, to opt out of the health or sex education and all that. I mean, how, how is that communicated to families, like to be able to opt out?
That's in the handbook.
I know, a lot of us.
Okay.
And you already have a policy regarding that, and this is referencing a state law. Like, these are all just, this is just a redundant list of things that already exist in state law.
Right.
Or in school policy.
Yeah, I was looking at those, seclusion and restraint, and I saw it, yeah, we already have a policy on that, so.
Yeah.
And there's state law, and like, it's really just a consolidated list of laws that already exist, so.
So is that true of like, of fifteen to access and review all educational records?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But like, I, I. So we do so many assessments, is it like all of those kind of?
Any parent has a right to request any, their own guarding their child.
So, okay.
At any time.
Right, I, I didn't see anything in here that.
Yeah, I mean, I figured, it seemed like it was all stuff we already did, you know, it wasn't, nothing new jumped out at me.
So, is there any more discussion, or can I move that we?
So, yeah, we can waive the, the three hearings.
Yeah, because this is something that's been done right away.
Yeah, okay. We don't like to, of course, but, you know, in a situation like this where there is a new law, we don't, there's nothing we could really.
And, and nothing jumped out at me, I was just that one I was concerned about, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't.
Like, we couldn't say for unauthorized communication devices, actually, our kids can have cell phones all day, like, that, that's against the law.
Yeah, okay, so, let's go with this one, so, I moved to approve the A B uh, New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights policy that we got from the New Hampshire School Board Association.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, I am. Uh, both of these policies will.
Next one's gonna be fun.
Um, should we do J I C J?
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, I personally agree with it, and I know it's law.
Right.
But really, how is the school planning on enforcing it when mom or dad say, my child because, I'm sorry, it's already been out there on Facebook.
Right.
People don't care that it's a law, that my child will have their cellphone with them at all times.
But I think it's a state law, and if the child is found to have, using the device like they're not supposed to, then you confiscate it. I mean, they'll just keep getting confiscated.
We currently do, as I say, that's our current policy, so it's not really different than our current policy. Um, and all honesty, high schools are gonna be the most affected, because most of your K through eights already have policies that exist, and they there's already discipline and sanction and things that have.
Are, I'm, Apple Watches part of it, because?
It says anything that's going to cause, my Fitbit, it gives me my text.
Because I had kids that came up and said, mom's picking me up, and I'm like, I haven't gotten notice of that, well, she just texted me on my smartphone.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, so they can't wear their smart.
There's a school office for that.
Yeah, no, but I'm just, it's just so, so they're not gonna be allowed to wear their Apple Watches.
I think they can wear them, but if they're found using it in that manner, yeah.
Right, like you could have a cellphone in your backpack, in your locker, but you cannot use it during, from bell to bell, is the law. So you can use it before school, on the bus.
Yep.
Home from school, whatever, but while their school is in session, they cannot use it.
I mean, I, I agree with it, I'm glad that it has gone through personally, but.
There's no need for them to have cell.
Right, I agree, but it's just. I'm glad it's not.
Right, how, how we strictly enforce it?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that the law gave us much more teeth than we already have at our.
No, and there, there isn't anything you can do, like subsequent offenses, there's nothing more you can do. You contact the parent, right, I mean, you just keep taking it away, give it back to the parent, I mean, you can't really do anything more. Right, make the parent come after school for detention.
The harder part will be the smartwatches.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
I didn't think about that.
Yeah.
But they're not used quite in the same way.
No, you can't.
They're more to receive something, you can't send a text from.
Some of them can.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Oh, see, I'm behind the times.
No, I don't.
Some of them have their own data plans, some even have to have a phone.
Correct. I, I don't need my phone to use. It's a separate charge that you pay monthly for.
That's right, I, I, I'm, there are a lot of kids that, only they don't have a cellphone, that's all they have.
Right.
They can even call from it.
You can call, take pictures, anything.
I'll make a motion to approve it as written.
All right, I'll second. Aye.
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 Um, speaking of the handbook, do you have a lot, do you think you'll have a lot of changes to the handbook, or should, you know, you'll have to include these new.
Yeah, we'll include these, uh, there's also, I, I had, um, I need a copy, we had some, one of the, or tiered system of support, I think there was a policy we had done at the end of last school year. And I think there was some information in there that we should include in the handbook, so, yeah, updating.
And we're gonna be modifying our probation procedure as well, so that's gonna be in there.
For the most part, it'll be, unless, uh, uh, um, unless there's other things like the volunteer, we talked a lot about that last, at the end of last year, or. Last summer is updating the volunteer.
Finger printed.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, we don't have.
Update the policy.
Yeah, the policy hasn't been updated, so that, that piece is, yeah.
Should update that.
You can add it to the, to the policy.
What's it called, do you know what it's called?
Volunteer.
If you just email me, I'll, I'll find it.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Um, the PTO was heavily involved with volunteers at one point, they're not taking that on, so. I just don't want people to think that volunteers aren't allowed to do it, because they are, that. They are certainly welcome to accommodate, teachers are welcome to invite people in to help out in the classrooms.
Right, so we were saying if they go on a field trip, that's the thing we were talking about, field trip, they need to be fingerprinted, yeah.
Overnight field trips they do, but regular field trips they do not, there's no policy in place since they have to.
But I thought we had said that we should do that.
Yeah, so we can, when you bring that, we can discuss.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, get into that.
We'll look at what they have and then look at it, alright.
You guys moving these forward to second readings?
Yeah, and the other two, I think we can move forward to second, and if people have comments, um. Per usual, you can email.
I just have one question, um, on the, the school one, uh, for the B E D G, which is meeting minutes. The, we have the New Hampshire School Board one, but then on the one that we had, there was stuff that was highlighted in yellow. Was that stuff to reflect the changes on the New Hampshire School Board, because I just wasn't sure why they were highlighted in yellow?
Oh, the highlights in yellow are just, that comes from the sample policy from the School Board Association, and Lexi probably just missed it when she. Transcribed it over.
Okay.
There, the highlighting in yellow are areas that you can edit and add your own language in for.
Okay, alright, I'll look at that, okay.
Okay.
Alright, so move those both to second.
Okay, um, informational items. Uh, monthly expenditure report.
So you have several reports in your drive. So there's one, um, June's expenditure report, because there's, there was a request for monthly expenditure reports, because the NBC. And so the, there's a June monthly expenditure report from last fiscal year. There's a July monthly expenditure report for July of the new fiscal year. And then there's also an expenditure report from the accumulation of last school year, F Y twenty four, twenty five. Um, but that is not, the books are not closed yet, we are still reconciling books. Because there are, there's always invoices that come in late from like, uh, out of district placements or specialized vendors. So there's always things that come in late, there's things, um, there's revenue that still comes in during summer months, so that's still being reconciled. So your books are not fully closed yet, that will be coming in the very near future, um.
There was a question at NBC of whether that would be finalized before the next NBC meeting, which is the twenty sixth.
That's the goal, I, I, I wouldn't promise that, but that is the goal, to have that, the F Y twenty four, twenty five. Um, fiscal year closed by that point and fully reconciled. So, in the last year's fiscal report, overall, Deerfield's ending in really good shape. Um, there was some, there's a surplus for sure, and the big drivers of that are transportation, there was a bus that was unused in the budget. Um, there were several teacher positions that were unfilled due to leaves, due to a variety of other reasons. Um, so there was a regular ed teacher, and then there was also special ed salaries that were, we basically saved salary on, because we didn't have an employee. But for special ed, like, we had to contract out for a service provider to come provide that service, that we didn't have a teacher because of the leave. Uh, so there was also savings in, large savings in, um, health insurance. Coverage, so we have a savings of around three hundred thousand dollars for health insurance. So, that had mostly to do with plan changes and rate changes from the health insurance company. So it was a benefit to us, how that worked out. Uh, we had some unanticipated revenue come in from special education aid from the state, there was more than we had planned. And Medicaid to schools programming, so that was again a positive. Um, overall, if things end exactly how they are now. We would anticipate around a five hundred thousand dollar surplus after funding the warrant articles. And part of that is because we continue to end in a default budget. And so the district had made recommendations to reduce the budget last year, so we wouldn't have had such a large surplus. But that reduced budget didn't pass, and so you go back to a default, which was actually larger. Than what the proposed district budget was.
Right.
And so we would have been more new align and not had such a large surplus had our budget actually passed. Which was lower than the default budget.
Right, because we took out a bus.
Correct, you took out things that you knew you weren't going to need this last school year or this school year. So it, it would have worked out a little bit lower, so you don't like to have those huge surpluses, but. The school did plan to have less of a surplus, but it just didn't work out that way. So it is, it is important when we develop those.
Is that because when you have a default budget, there are things then that we wanted to spend, but we couldn't? Because they're in the default, or like, I mean, they're in that budget, but we're not spending.
You also can't change lines.
Right.
So like, if we had four teachers budgeted.
Right.
You still have to have four teachers budgeted, even though you may have only needed two. And that's if that's cases, just an example.
Have a kinder earned teacher, we only had three kinders last year.
Yep.
Versus four that we had, that were in the default.
An example would be the interns stipends, we had seventy eight hundred dollars.
We don't, we didn't have.
Didn't have any interns.
Could have used that, right, we could have, we tried to get that money out, right, it ends up back in there, and so we have seventy eight hundred dollars.
Sarah, we can't use it, because we can't move it around, okay, got it.
Uh, right, because you can't create a new line, that maybe you would like to have a new position, and you could. Get rid of two positions and have that one position, but you can't do that, because you can't create a new line in the budget to have what you are requesting for. So, you know, it, ideally, we're, we're far behind, Deerfield's far behind, because you've been so many years in a default. That you're, what you are wanting, or what the administration's wanting for the school, is so out of line of what the budget allows you to do.
I think this budget in particular, we tried to make the operating budget less, so that we could realign the money. In a way that made more sense.
And hoping that it would pass.
So, and hopefully we can do, you know, just, again, try really hard with messaging and, um. Promoting that this year, because it really would be nice to align your budget with best practice and, and try to consolidate and be more efficient. So hopefully we get there this year, we'll see, but I just wanted to give you that rationale, that's why, in this case. Part of the reason why we have such a large surplus is because we ended in a default, and some of those items we knew we weren't gonna need.
So that surplus just gets returned to the taxpayers, correct?
Yeah.
That gets returned to the town and it's used to offset taxes.
Yep. Which is good.
Well, the, the only problem is, I, I mean, I can see people saying, well, you got by the year, you didn't need it, so why do you have it in the budget?
Right, but we didn't need it, we didn't, right.
We already now need two of those big things, right, it's like. The bus and the teacher.
Right. So we'll see, you know, we'll see where it shakes out in the season, um, that'll be coming up really quick, we're gonna be hitting budget season in a couple weeks. Um, we starting real soon, so. The other thing to think about with salaries is that we might have lost somebody who was high up on the pay scale and hired somebody who was brand new on it. So that will balance itself out too, and there's, there might even be a surplus again in that area.
Yeah, and I mean, I was explaining this at the NBC regarding health insurance, because there's a lot of questions about why there was such a big surplus. And, you know, we're budgeting fifteen months in advance, so we're basing it on the current roster, so someone. Who has a family plan may leave, and then we have a single person come in, and the costs are not gonna be as.
Yeah, and you might have someone who doesn't need it.
Right, or they might, spouse might take a different job and they have better benefits, so they want that plan, right.
Right, you just don't know.
So a lot of it is guessing, based on who we currently have, which may look very different than who we end up having for staff.
One question, I, if it's in parentheses, it means we overspent it, right?
Correct.
So on page three, the contracted. I'm sorry, the.
Expenditure.
Expenditure, budget, balance.
Each fiscal year, remember there was three, three fiscal year reports I gave you?
Seven, one, twenty, fiscal year twenty four, twenty five.
So at the top, if you give me the from date to the to date, it'll tell me what report you're open at.
To date six thirty, twenty five, so from six, one, twenty five, sorry, I didn't. I was just, oh, I see now how it starts, page one again, so, alright, sorry about that, but on. I just, cause, on contracted services.
For special ed?
Well, it just, it's the, yeah, I'm guessing page three.
Okay.
Yeah, I still forget, I know I had training, but I still forget, which is what, but it looks like, I mean, that's six hundred thousand dollars that we.
Yep.
Over.
So that is in reference to the positions that I said we had leaves for.
Okay.
We had a leave, so, see, we have a teacher out of maternity leave, right? If we can't fill that position, we have to contract out, and there were a couple of positions. That we were in that situation with, where we had to contract out for.
And contracting out is much more expensive, so, yeah.
And there was just, there were some expenses that came up with special ed that we didn't plan for fifteen months ago, and we had to expend, so.
Curious what that, that cost, what those salaries were compared to what those services were.
So we will go over all that during budget season. I hate to put it off, but I don't have the salaries in front of me.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, I just, that's, that's huge, I mean, even if each one of them had, made a hundred grand. That's still a massive difference, like four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Right, but that's only part of that.
It was also, yes, that's right.
There's a lot of individual student needs that fed into that as well, and I'll, we will have a more. Detailed report of that during the actual budget time, when we go through that, we'll go over what was spent, why was that over? And then we'll go over what we're proposing moving forward, and we'll have why we're proposing what we're proposing.
Uh, and like, if you, I mean, maybe this is not correct, but if you look at special placements, tuition further down, uh, page. Yeah, further down, we're over, I mean, we have a surplus left, it looks like, right? So like, Jess has explained to me before that generally when contracted services go up, special placements goes down, and it's sort of like this. So, like, we, we're getting services one way or the other, but we don't always know from which direction.
That's going.
So, because if, the more kids you have in your building, which is what you want, the more you're gonna spend on contracted services. The more kids you have in out of district places, the more you're gonna spend in that tuition line, because they're not in your building. So either way, you're gonna essentially spend that money, but what's in the best interest of that kid? Is, are they with their peers, are they with their teachers, are they with their homeschool setting? Or is it that they're, they need a specialized school, and so that's the decision those teams make. But you're, you know, like you said, you're gonna kind of see it in one line or the other, it's either gonna be you're paying for it in contracted services. Or you're paying for it out of your tuition line. So, but there, um, and I don't mean to just kind of put off why that's so, or I just don't have all the details with me.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's just.
And I can bring more of that, but we will go over that in much more detail during.
We spend a lot of time talking about, um, special ed contracts and tuition, um, because it's very confusing.
It's always our goal to hire somebody, uh, for, but, uh, according to the CBA, but. You know, you spend all summer looking for a speech and language pathologist, and you can't find one, and you need one to start the school year, so. Then you have to go to a contracted service, because it's, it's needed, but it's always our goal to, and this year we did find somebody, we were sharing. Um, a person with EPSON, how, but it is a contracted service still, she's still contracted, but we were able to. Um, find somebody, and she's working full time, because she's working part for us and part for EPSON, so we, we, you know, we're always trying to. Okay, is there any other, I can answer other questions about the budget? No.
I do not. Board training.
Yeah, so I just, um, I just wanted to offer it and see if you guys were interested, because I know there, um. Have been new members over the last couple of years, and I wasn't sure, even if Ellen and Nancy, you had gone through. A school board training, and if you wanted. Something like that for the board, I would contact the School Board Association, and they'll provide free training for board members.
So Ellen and I went, right after we were, um, joined the board, Chris, our bar, Christina came.
I have not.
You have not, I don't think Missy has, and I, and you have.
Yeah, I mean, I've done things online, but I haven't, you know.
But they'll come in and they'll do like an in-person training, and it'll just be, they can do it like before or after a board meeting. Um, and it's free, I mean, it's part of being a member, is you get those free trainings, so I figured I'd offer it, just because. I know there were probably several people who haven't gone through that, so it might be good, but, uh, that's up to you guys, if you want it, I'm happy to arrange it and. Um, get them in to provide that, but if you were like, oh, no thanks, I think we're all set, that's fine too, it's up to you guys.
I don't think it would hurt, you know, I mean, because even being on it a year, there's still stuff that's like.
And they sometimes have recommendations, so you're like, we're not sure how to tackle this problem. And then they have, they have a lot of experience, and they can offer solutions. I don't think it ever hurts, especially like, I do all the online trainings, and I try to ask questions in the chat or whatever, but sometimes. I ask a question, they half answer, and I have fourteen follow-up questions. Um, so having them in person, where you can be like, is this what we should be doing, how are we doing this? What, like, how do we accomplish this process, I think it's helpful.
I have no problem going with that.
Okay, would you guys want it, like, attached to a board meeting, or do you want to do like a special, like a different night?
How long, where?
Usually less than an hour, yeah, forty five minutes to an hour.
It would be good for me if it was on the same day.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. We can also, I think what we've done in the past is, because people work and can't get here earlier than five, we would start. That at five thirty and then start the regular board meeting at sixteen or six thirty or whatever.
I'll, I'll reach out to them and I'll see what they've got available and what they can make work to that time slot. It'll get, I'll send them your meeting schedule and see what they can make work.
Yeah.
Cool, okay, cool.
Uh, can I just, I just have one question under informational, so, okay, I didn't get a chance to send it to you, but, because I talked to someone recently, the time capsule. What do you understand is the time capsule's supposed to be opened in twenty twenty five? You guys, are you, you planning that? Okay, alright, I had a question from somebody who was here back, you know, her kid, who put, put it in, so, yep, okay.
T B D. Yes, um, okay, we don't have to do the back to school barbecue anymore, um, but P D review, professional development review.
Yeah, so, kind of going back to the conversation that came up earlier regarding NBC, one of the questions. Uh, that came up was around teacher P D and workshops and course money, things like that. So, um, one of the NBC members had reached out through email requesting. Um, this information that's in front of you, and I'm so sorry, it's so small, but it was the, the best way I could get this spreadsheet to print out. So the request was made for a list of every staff member. That had used P D money or workshop money. From the twenty three, twenty four school year and the twenty four, twenty five school year, certified staff and non-certified staff. However, I don't want to share documents with the public and the NBC that you guys have not seen first as a board. Um, because you need to know that what's being shared out and, uh, the potential questions that might come from that. So, this is a running list of all of the employees, the workshop names, the amount that they were approved for. The remaining amount in the budget, and our curriculum and instruction coordinator is the one who manages all of this. When teachers put in professional development requests, it has to get approved by their supervisor, by Amy. Um, and then she keeps track of how much money. Um, is in the budget, how much money they are allowed to have, and any special notes off to the side. So if it had to get union approval, there'll be a note that says require union approval. Um, or if there had to be special permission, because maybe the teacher wanted extra money. Um, but they had already spent their allotted amount, so the extra permissions will be noted in there. Uh, so you can see the running list, uh, the first. Two pages are the twenty three, twenty four school year, and then the last two pages are the twenty four, twenty five school year. Jess is titled to grant money in there, because we, a lot of, a lot, I, like, I took a workshop this summer. That was funded through Title II Grant Money.
Grant, grants are se- logged separately, because that has to be managed through the grant management system, this is. Professional development money out of the budget, which is what the NBC question was directed at.
Okay. And, um, just so, a lot of the, some of the, a lot of the DOE trainings are free, so, and like, letters is. Huge professional development in our school, and, um, but it doesn't cost a.
So, and, like, letters is, but, and it's huge professional development in our school, and, um, but it doesn't cost a t- us a dime to be able to take it, so.
Right, so this is not to be taken as an exhaustive list of.
Correct, correct.
These are only the ones that have monetary impact on the budget.
Do you want me to speak to the course line as well?
If you'd like, yeah, if you want to give that.
When we, when, uh, one of our leadership meetings, our Friday meetings, um, we were running out of funds in the course line. Some years we're taking on a master's program or taking courses, and some years we have. Several people had started master's programs, um, and when I was noticing in the budget that the line wasn't fully funded, so it was like, like twenty-six, five or something like that. And in the CBA, it specifically states that courses will be thirty-one, funded to thirty-one thousand dollars. So, we have to go over that line, because we had so many teachers who were working on programs that needed course line money. We ran out of money in that, in that area, however, we did not run out of money in the workshop line, which I think is budgeted for nineteen-five or something like that. That also was underfunded in the budget, so we had to increase that line as well. CBA, right, and, and that, well, that was fixed going into next school, so this school year, those lines are, are funded to the amount that they should be funded per the CBA. This, the teachers have a, um, language in their contract that states that if we run out of course funding money, and there's still money left in the workshop line, as, on June first, we can transfer some of that money to teachers who maybe have taken a course that did not get funded for. So I, two teachers in particular that had paid for a class, and then at the end of, on June first, we had extra money, so we tran- we were able to transfer some of that money, so we were able to pay them. I think one class was like twenty-eight hundred dollars, and the, or twenty-six hundred, and the other one was like twelve hundred or fourteen hundred, something like that. Or was, did, did she have two? Definitely, just one, yeah. So that, so that is, that, that's the story behind that.
So, the thirty-one thousand.
Yeah.
Should be thirty-one thousand in the default.
Yes, it is.
Because it's part of the contract.
And it is, yeah.
And it wasn't.
It wasn't, it wasn't, definitely wasn't for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, it is for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So, we ended up, if you look at that line, that line will be in parentheses, because you had, we had to, we had to, we had to go over that.
So that was an error on our accounting. Probably we were using the old contract.
Yeah, there was a, another contract, I think there was, like, year one, it was a certain amount of money, year two was another amount of money, year three was another amount of money, so.
So that would have answered some of the questions you got at the NBC, which.
Right.
I have no idea. Okay. Sounds good. Um, and then when you send this to the NBC member, will you just copy me?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, thank you.
Side message from Chris.
Oh.
He said, I forgot to ask for an additional three thousand dollars for unforeseen issues for the light poles.
Just as it have like a backup, in case something goes wrong.
It's gonna be on the excavation.
Right, in the end.
Boulder, boulder removal.
I mean, if you want, you guys could make a motion to allow up to three thousand dollars for emergency.
And that's the one that's coming out of trust fund?
Yeah.
So.
Sorry, this is.
Is, um, I mean, what would happen, I mean, I know that that happened with the Septic Project, right? Like, so what, I mean, what if we say no to that, and there's still that additional cost?
So we could convene an emergency school board meeting to approve something? We could have them half excavate and then not finish. But, you know, I think if we are agreeing to the project, there's always unanticipated costs. So, eh, the, the real question is, do we want to allow three thousand so that we don't have to convene an emergency school board meeting to approve, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars or, you know, seven hundred dollars that is above the bid?
And it's because it's coming out of trust.
Right.
Kind of like the fire alarm system, like that thing kept, we kept having to get more and more and more and more money for that.
Right.
No, I don't.
It better not be, it better not be like the fire alarm system.
It, it'll be for something that we missed or didn't know about until we start, so I think it, this is kind of like a, I want to have a buffer of about three thousand dollars in case we miss something or, or something.
But if it exceeds that three thousand, then. Yeah, so, I just, I don't know.
Okay, so if it exceeds.
Yeah, so let's say they start digging and we find, um, a historic site that we have to preserve somehow.
An endangered turtle.
We could decide at that point, we don't, we don't want to continue with the project, or we can pay the extra amount to save the turtles. And then we can move forward.
Problem is, is that all the materials are gonna be purchased, like, guaranteed, uh, um, yeah. I, I just, that's why I said it's gonna be the excavation, because I guarantee it's gonna be boulders and ledge and.
Not Deerfield.
Yeah.
It's up to you guys.
Do you want him to revisit the excavation bid?
Well, it just, you know, it was the lowest, you know, and I just, that, and there's a lot of contractors that that's the way they win jobs. They go in low, and then they say, hey, here's the change order, if you want me to finish the job, you know, and, so, I hate, I, you know, I just think that the three thousand just kind of arbitrary, because it's.
Right.
Knowing what the problem is probably gonna be, it's probably gonna exceed that if it, if it is that problem, but, I don't know, I'm fine if you guys want to, to allow the three thousand and then.
Yeah, it would be nice enough if it was, that amount was from the contractor saying, could be give or take three thousand.
Because they were below seven, and then if they get the three, then they're back up to where the others were. Because the, the other two were local contractors, they were at ten and twelve, and then the low bid was seven, and there was another one. I, I've never heard of those other two companies, but.
I, I just wonder if the higher bids.
Included.
Include thinking there could be more.
Usually they don't, usually, they, they really don't, I mean, they may have included like, oh, yeah, we might have to get some boulders out, but every excavator has a ledge clause, you know? Then it wouldn't be included, but maybe they did anticipate boulders, you know?
No, because I'm thinking even a higher bid.
Yes.
Could it go over with them too?
Right, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, so that's what I thought, but I just.
Three thousand's just kind of arbitrary, like.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with the three, and if it's gonna be a bigger problem, I think that we should reconvene for it instead of blank checking it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve three thousand as a contingency for the, uh, light pole project.
Okay.
All in favor?
I.
I. Alright, it was approved, if it's bigger than that, we'll reconvene. Okay. We're done with PD review?
Yeah.
Okay. We are on to public comments. No public, okay. I will make a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to NHRS A ninety-one dash A, full and three, section two, small letter B. Do we say add another one for the student?
Yes.
C. Uh, K? No.
No, it's C.
Okay, C, B and C.
I.
I. Alright.
At. It'll be quick.